All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, February 3rd. We just have one study session item for tonight. We have Director of Utilities and South Platte Renew Peter Van Ryan Guest Nicole Rowan with the Director of the... She's the Director of the Water Control Division of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, here to provide an update on the Inglewood Utilities Environmental and Compliance Programs. Good evening, Peter.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're happy to be here tonight to just give you a general overview of our regulatory compliance programs for Inglewood Water Utility, Water and Sewer Utilities. And I just wanted to recognize some staff in the, in the audience. Chris Edelstein, who is our Environmental Compliance Manager. Lauren Worley, who is our Environmental Compliance Coordinator. Dave Kaler, who's one of our environmental techs who does a lot of fieldwork. And then all of them are under Josh Roach, who's our Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance. And so if you all are here and could stand up, that'd be great. Just want to recognize the four of them. So they're the ones that make all this stuff happen. So I want to make sure that they are duly acknowledged. Okay, so what we want to cover today is really just a, an overview of, of where we're at from a regulatory perspective for, for the city. And so if you recall, when we first started this overhaul of the Inglewood Water Utility in March of 2020, we had, were experiencing a number of violations with the state with our regulatory compliance programs. And we had a number of regulatory issues over that next eighteen months, where we were sending notifications to our customers and, or specific mailings to our customers. And then we had the unfortunate issue with the boil order. And so we wanted to run through just where we're at from that, when we started in 2020 to where we are today. And, and allow Nicole to also, to, to talk from a state's perspective in terms of what the state is seeing as it relates to Inglewood Utilities. So you can see what we have is we're in compli-, we're actually, we're in compliance with all of our regulatory requirements. But just a quick list, we have a new compliance framework. We hired the professionals that I just introduced. We were officially designated a large system, which means we serve over fifty thousand people. So while our population is thirty-five thousand, when you consider the number of people who come into the city for work, it pushes our total population served by the water system to over fifty thousand, which triggers a different set of regulatory requirements. We've complied with our total coliform rule. Our lead and copper program is underway, which you've all heard about quite a bit over the last year and a half. Storage tank inspections, which was an issue that we, these are the white overhead storage tanks that we have two of in the city. Back in 2020, we had issues with the inspection compliance on those. PFOS, sampling of PFOS, ensuring that our customers are aware of what levels of PFOS we have in drinking water, which is below the, the regulatory level for PFOS. And then ultimately, one of our biggest issues at the time was our backflow prevention program. That was the one where we had to send the postcard out because we didn't meet the, the regulatory requirements of that program. And essentially, what we did end up doing with that backflow program is we, we accelerated what was a five-year compliance ramp-up schedule into essentially nine months. And this is one of the first things Josh did when he got here, is he got a hold of that program and turned it from basically paper records in a filing cabinet to a fully compliant program over the course of nine months. So what, what was supposed to take five to ten years to implement was done in nine months. So it was a pretty heavy lift. Okay, so the compliance framework is, is basically a dashboard that we use that allows us to keep track of these things. So much of the system used to be tracked with paper records. We are now tracking those systems in an organized fashion to make sure that we're meeting the regulatory deadlines. When they're required, we have those deadlines established so that when we're coming up on a deadline, we're ensuring that we're, we're ensuring that we're able to not miss a deadline. We've talked about staffing. Raw water accounting is another area where we need to account for our water use every day. We work with the State Engineers Office on that. And so every day that we're pulling different water rights from different decrees that we have, we have to provide that accounting to the state so we're sure that we're in compliance with our decrees. And so that program is now in place, which has really helped us stabilize and ensure that long-term we're meeting our water rights decrees. The large system designation was in September of 2022. As I explained before, it's based on fifty thousand populations served. And essentially what it does is when you get to that level of service, there's, there's a num-, there's a greater amount of regulatory compliance items that we need to follow through on. We've, we've done that. We've worked with CDPHE rule makings. We've gone through what's called a RAW process, which is a record of approved waterworks. We completed that and we're in compliance. And then the state disinfection process, which we've passed, which is, which those are done together. The RAW and the, RAW and DOV is what it is. And so we've completed all those and passed all those in the last few years. One of the things we did with our total coliform rule, so if you recall, this was what we ultimately traced the boil order to was a meter pit that had, that was leaking into where we were taking samples off of a hose bib off of a house. And so we were introducing the house as a, as a potential area of, sorry. I'm on two different texts here. As a, as a, as a potential, potential point of contaminant. The way we have corrected that is we bought what are called sample stations. And so we hooked those sample stations into the actual, the connection at the meter point. And that gets us as close to our actual distribution as system as possible. So we removed that, we moved that potential vulnerability that's associated with internal plumbing around a house. And so that's a, that's a, a much more industry accepted approach for a large water utility that we've put in place. It took, it took the, purchasing those sample stations and getting them deployed into our sample locations. And then ultimately, now that we've had, now that we've had those in place, we're actually adding more sampling station, or getting more sampling stations so we have more availability to potentially pull from different sites. Since then, we've had no rule violations and no monitoring plan violations. So lead and copper, we've talked quite a bit about. This is a regulatory program that's, we as Inglewood have decided to get ahead of as opposed to waiting for the regulatory, the regulatory deadlines to force us to react. And ultimately, what that's allowed us to do is access the federal funding that came through the bipartisan infrastructure law, use that money to help us fund a program that was originally, back in 2020, unfunded. It was, we estimated it could be anywhere from forty to eighty million dollars. And we had a programmatic amount of a million, a million dollars a year. So if you, if it's an eighty million dollar program, it's going to take, it's going to take a while. So now we're able to work through what we think is approximately, we think it's under three thousand. I think it's in the mid-two thousands, maybe twenty-five hundred, something like that. We are, as of January seventeenth, we're at five hundred and two replacements complete, so we're about twenty percent of the way through. We've potholed over fifteen hundred service lines. Ultimately, we'll be potholing every line that's, every line that is pre-1960. So if the home was built pre-1960, we'll, we'll physically verify at the street and at the curb stop that that line is not lead. What that has allowed us to do by taking that accelerated approach to, to removing lead service lines is it's allowed us to put off any need or eliminate any need for what's called optimal corrosion control in terms of additional infrastructure to add an orthophosphate or something to help protect that, that layer on the lead service lines. So by removing all the lines, we're actually saving capital investment on a system that ultimately, when we add more phosphorus to the, the water system, we end up needing to take it out at the, at the treatment plant, which costs us more money on the other end. And so ultimately, when we get the, the lead service lines removed, we'll be able to accomplish that optimal corrosion control using pH adjustments. So we just keep it at a, at a higher level of pH. And that way, it doesn't leach out whatever may be protecting the water supply from lead. Okay, storage tanks, I talked about that a little bit. These are two overhead. We did have an issue with, we have an issue with inspection compliance on these. That is now in that environmental compliance program framework. We've also installed new level sensors to help us understand what level those tanks are at. We've improved the outflow, the overflow and outlets of those tanks. And then also done a structural analysis and a, we looked at the coatings to, to see what, what the life of the coating is and when we will potentially need to repaint those. So that is, those are pretty substantial infrastructure pieces that are now on a regular schedule of, of periodic review. Our dam safety program, so we have a number of dams that are part of Inglewood's system. We have a, that's also now in our environmental compliance framework. And we are inspected annually on those dams. So McClellan Reservoir is the one that's closest. That's down by County Line and Santa Fe. And then we have the one up in the mountains, which is Meadow Creek. We also have a couple dams at the Allen Plant Site. All of those get inspected to ensure that they're in compliance with the State Engineers Office. And we have been in compliance with those. We've talked a number of times about PFOS. So PFOS are forever chemicals that are, that become much more of a, an issue in recent years. We have gone through a couple cycles of sampling of both our source water and our finished water to ensure that we are meeting the compliance regs for PFOS, which our, our finished water does meet those regulations. However, we are also piloting, we, we secured a grant for four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to do a, two things. One is to, to do a source water assessment of where PFOS is coming into our systems, as well as a piloting a system, we're piloting a system at the Allen Plant to remove PFOS. So even though we're within the regulation, we exceed what's called the health advisory level, but we are below what's called the, what's called the maximum contaminant level. So that's our regulatory level that we're, that we're held to. By continuing to investigate piloting for removal processes, we'll still continue to look for ways to remove those chemicals from our water system. The issue with these chemicals, as we've talked about before, is they're in all, they're in just thousands of products. And they're in thousands of household products. And the majority of what impacts our source water is, is household product related. And so it's a, it's a much bigger national issue that we're working on. The last piece on this is we've talked about the, the cases that we've joined in terms of trying to recover some amount of settlement out of any of the class action cases, which we've, we've entered into, I believe, four of them so far. And there's just a number of them that are out there as well. Our backflow program, this was that one that I told you when we first started. It was, it was some papers in a filing cabinet. And, and we had no one that actually had a sense of what our inventory was. And we were coming up on the end of our, our compliance deadline to get it implemented. And so we worked furiously to, to comprehensively assess and inventory all of our backflows. We're still working through some cross connections that we've, that have been found and eliminating those cross connections. Those are all within compliance with the, with the program now. However, we'll talk a little bit about a paperwork issue that we had this last year that we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about. A lot of the, the issue with backflow is customer education and making sure that people understand why the backflow is needed, how often they need to test them and those kinds of things. There was a little bit of a hiccup last year with the, the state rules. The state legislation passed a rule that essentially said the backflow testing could only be done by licensed plumbers, which then put a whole bunch of certified backflow people in a state of confusion, I guess, in terms of those were the people that were certified. So that's been corrected for now. And we, we anticipate that the legislation will, legislature will fix that long-term. You can see numbers on backflow. We verified fourteen hundred plus commercial and multifamily connections. We've identified four hundred and fifty-eight unprotected cross connections. And so a cross connection is where there's a potential for water to siphon back into the, the distribution system, which we don't want. Once we find those, we put a backflow in. Backflow is essentially an air gap. And so it protects whatever that downstream system, our system is, from whatever that downstream system is. So you don't get some kind of a, a pressure back siphoning. And if it's a chemical or if it's contaminant, it makes it into the system. So we've increased our backflow amount from fourteen seventy-seven in 2022 to two thousand ninety-eight today. So you can see we've added more since we found those cross connections. And then ultimately, on that last bullet, we had our, what's, what's called our sanitary survey. It's an inspection that we go through where they, they essentially look at the entire regulatory system as well as the treatment plant to make sure that we're in compliance with, with what we are required to be in compliance with. And we, we did have an issue on our, our backflow program. Oh, shoot, sorry. I forgot to give you a second to see those numbers because, sorry, I forgot to advance the slide. But yeah, fourteen sixty-two, and we're up to almost twenty-one hundred today. And then the results of the sanitary results is we had three plant issues. So these were, as the inspections were occurring, three things that they identified that were findings that they, that we actually got corrected immediately before the, before the end of that week. We did have one violation for our backflow program, which is, it's called a tier-three violation, which is a, which is a paperwork violation. And so essentially what happened was during the fall of 2023, there was a transition of, of how the backflow program was being implemented between the state and local agencies. And we, and, and what this came down to was allowing an extension for a church and for, I think, I believe it was a medical facility, were, were two that we allowed extensions for. But according to the, the rules, we weren't in a position at that point in time that we could allow for the extension. So one of them actually got the backflow issue resolved within, didn't need the extension. The other one had it resolved within ten days of that extension date. And so in reality, there was, there was no, there was no real issue. It's just it was a, it was uncovered as a programmatic paperwork approach that requires us to, to notify within our, our CCR Consumer Confidence Report annually, which will go out in May or June of this year. So you'll see that one violation in the CCR this year. And it's, it's related to that administering an extension before we were actually able to administer that extension for essentially two properties, one of which only used the extension by ten days. So it's, it's more of a technicality as it relates to what we have to follow through based on the requirements of the law. But overall, once we got through that sanitary program, sanitary review, the system is in really good regulatory health. And we feel like we've got a good handle on, on our systems that have been a significant advancement from paper files in filing cabinets and desks that didn't have any real long-term strategy to ensure that knowledge transfer and things like that occurred. So that is a, a general overview of what we've, what we've been doing from a regulatory framework perspective since, since we started in 2020. I'm now going to just turn this over to Nicole Rowan, who's the Director of the Water Quality Control Division at CDPHE. And we, we're fortunate that we get to work with Nicole and her staff often on these types of issues. And I just, I really appreciate Nicole coming to talk with council about any questions you may have about our regulatory programs. And so I'm going to turn this over to her for a few minutes, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members, for having me tonight for this important discussion. I appreciate being here. My name is Nicole Rowan, and I serve as the Director of the Water Quality Control Division at the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And our team is charged with implementing the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act and the Clean Water Act here in Colorado. Our division greatly values the longstanding partnership we have with the City of Inglewood. And tonight, I want to focus on three areas and kind of reiterate some of the points that Peter made with respect to water quality compliance, infrastructure improvements, and your proactive approach to protecting drinking water. So with respect to compliance, we really appreciate all the efforts to maintain very high standards within the drinking water program at Inglewood. As Peter mentioned, Inglewood currently has no water quality or treatment technique violations, which is a very commendable achievement that demonstrates your commitment to public health. And following the 2021 Boil Water Order, your improvements such as refining the total coliform sampling collection procedures and installing those dedicated sampling stations have provided more accurate assessments of water quality and avoided potential sampling errors. We really appreciate the infrastructure and process enhancements that Peter described. You know, the upgraded water main and line break repair processes significantly reduces the risk of contamination during service repair disruptions. And, you know, our department was very pleased to partner with you all to assist with a grant for online chlorine analyzers, which are critical for real-time monitoring of your disinfection processes. And just with respect to the sanitary survey inspection that Peter mentioned, you know, your team was very proactive in resolving all of the deficiencies. And really appreciate, you know, the understanding with the paperwork issue and the importance of transparency and following those federal procedures with respect to, to public notification. Appreciate all the work there. We, you know, also really appreciate all of the infrastructure improvements that are ongoing. You know, the enhanced disinfection and pH control. Again, optimizing the disinfection treatment to better protect against waterborne disease and the pH control are really key again to managing the lead levels within the system to ensure that water remains safe. And we also appreciate all the work that you're doing that's really innovative with respect to the aesthetics of the water. And no, that's important to the community. And finally, I think, I just wanted to highlight some of the things that you're doing that are really proactive. Again, the lead service line replacements and seeking the funding for that and getting ahead of those federal requirements just is a, is a great approach, and you should all be commended for that. And with respect to PFAS as well, you know, you've been very cooperative and transparent with our team as we have worked to inform the public about this. It's really challenging with the health advisory and the... It's really challenging with the health advisory and the MCL levels. As Peter talked about, it's very difficult from a risk communication perspective, and just appreciate all the the transparency there. And we are really excited to see the results of the pilot study that we funded for PFAS for treatment techniques that you're investigating. I understand, as council members, you're deeply invested in ensuring the safety and sustainably sustainability of your water supply, and your efforts in infrastructure investment and response to issues that have been rapid and detailed really show a clear public communication effort, and they have tangible tangible results for all of your residents. I think it's important to know that we really value our partnership with you all, protecting our water resources as a shared responsibility, and the strong partnership between Inglewood and our division is vital to overcoming challenges and setting standards for water quality in Colorado. So thank you for your continued commitment to safeguarding drinking water in Inglewood, and thank you again for having me here tonight.
Director Rowan, thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you very much for the overview of how we got here today, and just really appreciate the the overview of our successes. Director Van Rye, thank you very much for the overall presentation. I'm going to open it up to council for any questions or comments. Go ahead, Member Nunakamp.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for being here tonight. It's a wonderful, I guess, way to encapsulate everything that's been happening in this in this one part of the division, which is amazing. I have a question about PFAS, something that we talk about a lot around here, and how you are reacting or responding to the changes in the federal administration's thinking around additional regulations coming from PFAS. I know we've been thinking, waiting for more regulations, thinking about how we're going to plan for that. How are you responding, and does this change any of our planning? And I'm curious, both from the Inglewood perspective, but then also if the state has anything in in their plans.
So so from our perspective, we haven't seen anything that's causing us to deviate from our plan right now, which is we're still in the piloting phase, we're and we're doing that we're doing that source water, source identification. And then ultimately, we're working to, at a legislative level, eliminate the use of PFOS compounds in products. And so we make incremental, we make incremental gains in that process annually. Last year, we had a a rule that helped that pass that helped that more. But there's still there's still products that have PFOS. And so they're still going to concentrate in wastewater, they're still going to end up in the source water. And so until we can fully eliminate PFOS from the products, we're always going to have something to be dealing with as it relates to PFOS. So that's why we're going to continue down our path relative to the the class action suits, but also the piloting and and trying to figure out ways to treat our water for it, even though we are currently below the contaminant level. We don't know that that might change in the future, so we're not necessarily stopping. As far as a federal level and how that's according with the state, I'm going to turn that over to Nicole.
Thank you so much for the question. You know, I think from the from the federal perspective, you know, there's a lot changing very rapidly right now. I haven't heard any plans to potentially veer from the current regulation that was finalized last year. You know, that could happen, but we haven't seen any indication of that right now. You know, I think Colorado has been a leader in the country in trying to address this issue since about the middle of last decade. And so we've kind of experienced a couple of different federal administrations with respect to this and, you know, have our own state plans. Again, you know, building on what Peter said, really focusing on stopping the the source of exposure and really trying to, you know, focus upstream as much as we can in preventing these from getting in the system to begin with. But there's going to be the legacy issues that we have to deal with for a long time.
Thank you.
Member Ward.
My question is in regards to the regulatory notices that we're required to send to our water users. It seems like we are sending these with a on a relatively frequent basis. You know, we broke this rule, or we didn't, we got caught for this, or, you know, I don't know exactly how to explain it. You explained it better than I did, but it's it's a tier-three public notice is what's referred to here. And my question is, when your average person opens that notice and they they see we have a violation, it may look more severe than it actually is. And when we had the boil order, for instance, we were we were told that there was specific language prescribed. We couldn't add anything, we couldn't take anything away, it just had to say this. And it was very alarming to the people in our community, even though we knew at the time that we sent that notice that it wasn't a widespread issue. I guess I have one question for Director Van Rye, which is, what can we do to sort of mitigate the damage that this causes to confidence in the system in the future? And then, Ms. Rowan, I I don't know if there's anything on a state level that we can do. I mean, I understand the purpose of these notices, but for the average person receiving this in the mail, like I said, it's it's very alarming, or it can be very alarming, and it it creates an appearance that something other than what's actually happening is happening. We've made great strides, as you've indicated, in in the way our water system works and how we're planning for the future, and someone might not get that impression when they get this regulatory notice.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Yeah, I think the I I think you're you're hitting on some of the 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 balance of that we're trying to strike with staying in compliance with the federal regulations, the drinking water regulations, while also indicating in the the notification, which is required, the degree to which this is something that people should be concerned about. So what are we doing to mitigate that? So we when we first, the the inspection was last summer, and we worked back and forth with the state for quite a few weeks to to make sure that we were appropriately characterizing what the potential issue was, which was a which ended up being a, you know, essentially a paperwork issue. One of the ways that we're trying to help to indicate the degree to which or to add clarity to that is by 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 being here tonight, by inviting Director Rowan to to come talk to the council and from a state's perspective, so that so that you all can, if you're getting calls from your constituents saying, hey, what is this? You get more of a macro view of where we are from a regulatory program perspective. In twenty twenty, we were we were in we were in rough shape, and the amount, the number of things that you see them summarized here, the amount of work that has gone into going from essentially, you know, we've talked about underinvestment, under, it's not just underinvestment in physical infrastructure, it was underinvestment in staffing, it was underinvestment in in systems, it was underinvestment in in essentially regulatory follow-through to the point where, once you start to, once you start to uncover, you know, flip over the rock and see what's underneath, you you realize, okay, we're in we're in for a few years of this. And so it was unfortunate that we ended up with that with that violation. However, the, you know, the regulation is the regulation. So we thought that, you know, one of the ways to help mitigate and to help level set what, you know, our customers should think is by being here tonight. And and if you get a if you get a question from one of your constituents, you can point them to this discussion, and 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 it's it's not just me saying it, we're we're with the state here. So so I think that's from our perspective. As as far as the second part of your question for Director Rowan, I'm gonna, if you were calling the second part.
Yeah, I think it was maybe maybe related to the language in the in the notice, and I think that is something, you know, we can try to work with, you know, the city on as we move forward with that, just to make sure that it's clear of what the violation was. But again, as Peter indicated, I think our, you know, we want, we felt it was important to be here tonight for this discussion, especially around the violation, for you to know just how much we appreciate, you know, all you've done to work on your drinking water system over the last few years, and just appreciate all that hard work.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate seeing the advancement of the partnership with CDPHE that having you here tonight shows. I think we are making progress, and and thanks for being here tonight.
Member Rye.
Thank you. Thank you both, Director Van Rye and Director Rowan. And it's nice to see faces here of the people that are doing the work, and I appreciate you being here and everything that you do. I just have a couple of questions. One of, I have to tab my pages. For the sampling stations, it says in twenty twenty-three, there were thirty-three dedicated. September twenty-four, additional stations were ordered. I believe you stated that those were in place now. Is that correct?
So so the the thirty-three are in place, the 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 additional ones that are ordered is because we have to expansion, expand our number of sampling sites based on the new lead and copper rule that we're now subject to, which is associated with becoming a large utility. So I'm going to turn around and and check with Josh here and put him on the spot and see if, are those are those installed?
They're not all installed yet, but the goal is to, if we ever take a sample anywhere.
Actually, can you can you, can I bring up Josh Roach?
Yeah, Josh, I was going to ask because speaking to the mic, for those listening online.
Squat here.
They're not all installed yet, but we're in active process of doing that. And the goal is, if we ever take a, if we ever have to take a sample in any place that we're taking it through that station, not through the house. So it's our goal to never take a sample from a house spigot that's real close to the dirt and we're turning on, trying to clean it. The goal is to stop doing that completely. And right now, we're pretty much there. We're we're putting some more in to make sure that we never have to do that again.
What were, what will that total number of stations be? Because it didn't say.
It'll be close to a hundred-ish, or so, once we're completely done with the sample stations.
We have thirty-three in right now.
Come on down, everybody.
Or Josh, you could just repeat it.
We have thirty-three installed right now, and we've ordered sixty-six more to have upstream and downstream from those thirty-three. So it'll be ninety-nine total at the end.
Okay, fantastic.
No, two.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Okay.
And just for clarification, that was Chris Edelstein, our our environmental compliance manager in utilities.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, and then it also said that you're going to pothole any home that was pre-built, pre-1960.
Yes.
We're having a lot of homes that are being taken away and rebuilt. So are you using the Cessar's office to identify pre-1960 and earlier homes?
So that's one of the areas that, once we get through the ones that are obviously have been are obviously the original build, when we come across sites that look like they've been a rebuild, we are going back through to make sure that we didn't miss something in terms of a, you know, maybe it was remodeled in the eighties or something like that. And so that's the that's the last step in 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 trying to comprehensively ensure that that we don't have any lingering lead out there. So the reason why we're also taking it at the street as opposed to on either side of, what we were originally talking about was either side of the curb stop or either side of the meter fit. The reason we're doing it right at the street is because sometimes what would happen is a a house would get their service line changed or replaced, but they'd only replace it to that curb stop, or they'd only replace it to that meter, and then you'd have this six, eight, ten-foot piece of lead that's still connected to the pipe. But if you were just to take it in that localized area, it would look like it's a copper line, whereas in actuality, we're trying to, oh, sorry, we're trying to, sorry about that. We're trying to ensure that that the that every piece of potential lead between the pipe and the house is being picked up.
Okay, perfect. And then just left-field question, but I did get a call about it. Someone was asking, the dam safety program, why are all the trees removed near the dam?
So the reason we remove trees near dams is because roots cause basically piping tunnels for seepage to, roots will fail a dam structure. And so anytime we see trees or anything that's 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 not small vegetation to stop surface erosion, we we pull those out because we don't want that root intrusion to compromise the the internal integrity of that earthen dam. That's why we remove those.
Okay. And then one more question, please. I was looking at the products that contain PFOS. Is there an education program just out for the public? Because I like going to the spa and getting my nails and toes done, and looking at this nail polish, and I'm like, oh, no, I'm contributing to this mess. So is there an education program where, hey, you could help this by using reusable bags or that type of thing?
Thank you, councilmember. You know, we have some educational materials on our website, and I will make sure to get that to Peter to share with you all. And, you know, I think there's also, that links to other resources, too, so people can better understand what is in what products contain PFOS.
Yeah, it's kind of shocking, actually.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you so much.
Member Anderson and then Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Director Van Rye and Director Rowan, for speaking to us on this topic today. My question is just some more specifics around the the notice we're going to have to issue, mostly so I can just explain it clearly to the constituents if it comes up. What exactly was the, why weren't we allowed to issue that extension? Is that something we, are we allowed to issue extensions, and how did we miss that, kind of overlook that requirement?
So so I'm going to I'm going to try and get this, it's it's complicated, but I'm going to try and get this right. So that fall, there was a transition of how the program was being administered by the state. And in that transition period, we had worked with the state to issue extensions on a couple locations that the change occurred while that extension was that or that the initial request for extension was in place. And then we assumed that that change allowed us to act on those previously issued extensions, which technically we weren't able to do, and it was on those two sites. And so essentially, what this is, is just coming into compliance with the backflow program and giving, you know, when when we identify for especially a large user the need for a backflow, this isn't a couple hundred dollars. This is, this can be tens of thousands of dollars of investment that's required, depending on the size of their line, where they have to, you know, dig in, connect with the pipe. And so the regulation affords us the ability to allow a user, once it's identified, time to come into compliance. I think the original compliance timeframe is a hundred and twenty days, and if it if a lot of times, especially in the winter, you can't get, you can't even figure out if it's working by that point in time. So these were both, these are both winter time issues. One was in December, one is was in January, and really just came down to a technicality of who is allowed to say, yes, you can add a little bit more time to that. Now, where that actually gets noticed is in our annual consumer competence report, which is now our annual report. So our CCR is now an annual report for the water system, and towards the end of that, you'll see anywhere where there's a a potential violation, and it just it just gets reported there, which we've had those in the past, and they're they're technically, they're typically technically things that are associated with compliant schedules or like, we had one for the overhead tanks, where the overhead tanks weren't re-inspected in the timeframe that they were supposed to be. And so that was one of the ones that we had to notice a few years ago. And so this was really just somewhat a misunderstanding through the fall on two specific extensions that, in reality, step back, there's no real issue associated with them, but in terms of technically staying in compliance, we have to report that. Very good, thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you both for being here this evening and and for the report you've given. And I I have one question, and I don't have the exact address, but apparently there were some issues with a backflow device in the thirty-five-hundred block of South Clarkson because there was, and I don't know if you all know about this, I was kind of assuming it might have been that newer property there, because all of the residents were posting that they were being charged four thousand dollars to fix the backflow system. Has there anything like that been going on?
Let me, I'm going to check with, are you familiar with this site? Or is anybody, so that might be a specific thing that we have to look into.
Okay.
Because it's a specific address. I'd hate to. I'd hate to try and venture an answer if, um, we, we don't have it. But if you can get us the address, we'll look it up and, and find out what's going on with it.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then I just want to thank you for the care that you took and for your openness and transparency. It may be uncomfortable for people, but the reason we have laws is to protect the people. And maybe there wasn't a danger, but maybe there was. And so I just, I thank you both very much for making sure that we're transparent and doing the right things. And for you, Director Van Ryan, for moving forward on all the other issues that we've been dealing with. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for members of council? Well, Director Rowan, Director Van Ryan, thank you very much for the update on the environmental and compliance programs. Thank you very much for your time tonight. And I'm sure that we'll have, uh, further conversations here in the future. So, thank you both.
Thank you, council, appreciate it.
All right, everyone, we're gonna take a fifteen-minute break and we'll kick off the regular meeting at seven PM. Uh, so about a fifteen-minute break. Thank you, everyone. All right, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, city clerk, if you please take a roll call.
Yes, good evening. Mayor Portem Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Camp.
Present.
Member Prang. Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Wright.
Present.
Mayor Sierra.
Present.
Six present and one absent.
Thank you. And Member Prang did let me know that she was not gonna be in attendance tonight. Uh, moving on to consideration of minutes from the previous session. Any changes to the minutes from the regular city council meeting from January twenty-first? Seeing now can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the January twenty-first meeting?
I move to approve the minutes from January twenty-first.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second? Thank you, Member Russell. Can we please vote?
Mayor Portem Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
That the record shows six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to recognition, the twenty-twenty-four sustainability grant, uh, program recipients. So Inglewood City Council would like to recognize the, uh, members from the community that have, uh, contributed to the sustainability grant that provides up to a thousand dollars for Inglewood-based sustainability projects. Just wanted to call attention to a few of these. So Tracy Sabina, she created the Little, Little Green Libraries near, uh, excuse me. Tracy created Little Green Libraries near composting drop-off locations in Inglewood, which contain educational materials on composting and sustainability. In the future, use of these could expand to contain seed packets and other materials to encourage sustainable, uh, sustainable practices. Andrew Fourlines. Andrew, uh, worked with the library to add induction burners to the library of things that are available for community members to check out, as well as hosted an education session on how to use induction burners for cooking. Sarah Duke. Uh, Sarah and KBCO Radio partnered with Inglewood Schools to fund endorsements for a sustainable music program to have people donate their new or lightly-used instruments to music programs that underserve schools in Inglewood. Rhonda Wilcox. Uh, Rhonda hosted a jigsaw puzzle exchange, uh, to reduce waste, keep puzzles out of landfills and encourage reuse. Austin Jones. Um, Austin implemented with South Inglewood Composting Collaboration, which had added three composting bins in the South Broadway and Mansfield Heights neighborhoods and publicly accessible alleys. This project reduces waste and provides opportunity for community members to compost in an area that was previously not available. And Kelly, uh, Kelly Wolver. Uh, Kelly with Charles Hay Elementary School installed a publicly accessible bike stand to maintain their fleet of thirty-five bikes. This project provides students the opportunity to learn how to tune up and maintain their bikes and encourage them, them to bike to school. So these community members have taken it upon themselves and the initiative and implemented these innovative ideas to make sustainable, uh, sustainability, sustainability accessible for all. Inglewood City Council thanks you for your contributions and dedicate, dedication to the city of Inglewood. So thank you very much, everyone. I'm hoping that you could all come up and take a picture with, uh, members of council. Really appreciate all the work you've done to bring focus to sustainability within the city itself. Thank you. All right, everyone, we're moving on to Agenda Item Eight. This is recognition of public comment. So there was a sign-up sheet in the back for people to sign up. Inglewood residents must provide your address or your cross streets. Non-Inglewood residents must provide the name of your city. If you have addressed council in the last ninety days, you will be moved to the bottom of the list. Written materials may be submitted to City Council in advance or at the meeting. And audiovisual materials must be submitted to the city clerk by five P M. on the Thursday prior to the meeting. And public comment will be limited to ninety minutes total. Excuse me. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. And please limit your presentation for three minutes. We do have, we also have a public hearing tonight, so I will be asking if you're looking to speak for public comment or if you're looking to speak for the public hearing. Let's see here, we have about four people that are looking to speak tonight. Up first is going to be Charles Downing with no topic given. Good evening, Charles. When you are ready to speak, you may begin. Actually, I'll start off by just asking, are you looking to speak for public comment or for the public hearing tonight?
I'm looking to speak for public comment. I didn't realize there was going to be a public hearing.
Oh, no, you're good to go. You're in the right place, Charles. So feel free to begin when you are ready.
All right. Are we running here?
Yeah, you're ready, Doc.
Okay. So the fires that just occurred in Pacific Palisade were certainly an eye-opener for me. I was unaware that wind-driven fires could behave that way. So I did some research as regards wind-driven fires here in Inglewood, and I'd like to share the following statistics with you. When we get to the eleventh fire hydrant committed to a fire, we are running out of water in Inglewood. We can handle ten hydrant fires all day long, but when we get to the eleventh, we start running out. On a ten hydrant fire, we have about four hours to get the fire knocked down. After that, things are getting very dicey as far as running out of water. By six hours is the no-go, go, no-go call as to whether we're going to switch to bulldozers, and by twelve hours, we're going to be completely out of water. And so if we have a Pacific Palisade-style fire here in Inglewood, we need to get it either knocked down, or we need to get the population out of the way in the first six hours. I went to the county's emergency operations webpage to find out what the plan was for all of that, and there isn't one, even though we pay a substantial amount of money to the county each year for just such a thing. And we don't really have anything on the city website as well. Even though I can see that the data is certainly available, it's just not available to the population. So I wrote a letter to the fire chief at Denver Fire and asked him if they could make their radio feed public again so that we could all hear what was going on. And they didn't, they never wrote back. And I wrote to the fire marshal here in Inglewood and asked him for some guidance about how Inglewood's policies were four, six, twelve hours into a fire. And I also didn't get any answer back on that. So I assume that there is really no plan at all. And I just, in closing, I'd like to encourage us to get a plan because, you know, without one, we're all just a bunch of refugees. So that's it. That's what I have. Thank you.
Mr. Downing, thank you very much for your time tonight. I know that we have at least one question. Go ahead, Member Wright.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
You're welcome.
The ten to eleven fire hydrant information, where exactly did you get that from?
I'm doing the math. Inglewood has two reservoirs, the Meadow Creek Reservoir and the McClellan Reservoir. Between them, they hold two-point-eight billion gallons of water. But our entire water system is fed by a pump, and the effective throughput of that pump is approximately ten million gallons a day. In Inglewood, on a given day, we only use three million gallons, which means there's a massive overpopulation of water we could use. But once we open up that eleventh fire hydrant, we're losing it faster than we can get it back because the pump only goes so fast.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Downing, just a question for me. Is your ask to just have information available on what our plan would be in the event of a fire that was encountered in Palisades?
Is there an app?
No, is that what your ask is of council? That we provide information on the website that?
Yes. I think that, at the very least, that the city should provide the citizens with a very simple dashboard of some sort that tells them where the fire is, which way the wind is blowing, and what they should do with their lives, you know, where the escape routes are, if they need to use them, and all of that. And we don't really have anything like that.
All right. I see no further questions, Mr. Downing. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Up next is Gabriel Buckner, I believe. And yeah, Inglewood residents, so come on up, Gabriel. Gabriel, when you are ready to speak, you may begin. You have three minutes. Good evening.
Okay, how you doing?
Good.
I'm here to just address a situation that's kind of going on in our community. I live over by, I don't know if you're familiar with the Marx Apartments, Kimberly Woods, Kimberly Village, the King Supers, the brand-new King Supers that was built there, the apartment complex. But, you know, for the past nine years, I've been dealing with a pretty intense situation to where, you know, it's really incriminating. I wouldn't say incriminating. It's not words, incriminating is not what I'm looking for, but it's a crime that is being committed that is premeditated and is done by the police department and the county over extreme amount of property and someone's management. And I've been down to Inglewood, tried to talk to them, tried to file a police report, tried to get the situation to stop, and it escalates and escalates and escalates. And now it's like in our community where people shop at, you know, a shopping center, King Supers, the brand-new, which is, I believe, is someone's management, which I believe it is my management through, you know, that has been, you know, almost, you know, what's the word I would say, like illegally obtained, legally obtained by falsifying a crime and falsifying something and trying to hold it in court and hold it, you know, and then through that process, me pretty much losing my whole foundation and my management and everything else that is tied into the property up there. But the main reason that I'm down here is because in the community, there is a situation where we do have new people moving from California, other people coming from New York, other people coming from different states, moving there. And it's to a point where stuff has escalated there to where, to where, I don't know, you could say like illegal, a lot of illegal activity, a lot of illegal activity, breaking into houses, not breaking into houses, there's no breaking into houses, but it's a lot of illegal activity that's being done in the King Supers and the King Supers down the street. And I believe that it's just through that whole process, I think someone with Inglewood and the county or Apo is trying to illegally obtain something that is not theirs. And it's created a situation with the community, with Inglewood, with just, you know, just the whole economy to a point where someone wants to hold on to a person for their financial benefit. So it's to a point where it's just gotten way out of control. I've been down there, tried to get it to stop, and it's to a point where it's like it's, in the community, it's really escalated. It's really escalated, you know. So, and I know with the property that's there, you know, it's, all of a sudden, supposedly, there's so many people that own it that it's unreal. And through the whole process, you know, I've lived up there for forty years, you know, thirty, thirty-one years, thirty-one years. So.
Mr. Buckner, your three minutes are up. Yeah, no, you're good. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Wright.
I do. I just need clarification, please. So are there, do you believe that there's crimes being committed to other people or crimes being committed towards you?
I think there's crimes being, I think it's a premeditated crime. I think it's a case of human trafficking. I think it's over someone's financial and their management, you know, that they want to hold on to a person. And I believe that it's gotten so out of control that it's starting to affect other people. And with the county and with this county, you know, they're holding on to somebody to a point where that person is losing and losing, and then all of a sudden, it's starting to affect people. So I wouldn't say that it's a crime direct, well, I wouldn't say it's almost a crime directed at me, but it's also involving other people, too. So.
Okay, okay.
Anything else, Member Wright?
Um, no, I think this is something we need to talk about.
Yeah, Mr., yeah, thank you. Mr. Buckner, I want some clarification. Well, so is this occurring at just specifically the, I guess, the King Supers that's off of Hampton and University, or are there multiple locations that you're seeing this?
Well, there's multiple locations, but it's all, it all involves an extreme amount of property, you know, that I believe that, you know, it's right at the main, like the where it's really escalating is right off of University and Hampton and D U area, because I live right by the college. I live by the college. I live right by Denver University. I live by Cherry Creek. So I, you know, went to school to Cherry Creek. So, you know, right on that vicinity right there where that new shopping center was built, which I believe is, you know, is, it is stolen. I believe that it's stolen, but it has escalated over there where, you know, it's, you know, yeah, I just, there's been a lot going on to bank robberies, to robberies, to shootings, to the store being robbed, to the bank being robbed, to, and behind this, like, you know, check fraud where there's money orders missing, money order machine missing, the tellers or where you check out your stuff, that's all been torn up and replaced. So I think it's like a serious case of fraud over property and, you know, serious checks and everything else to a point where it has affected the community.
Okay.
You know, so.
And, Mr. Buckner, who have you contacted about this? You mentioned?
I've contacted the police. I've been back to the courts. I've been back, you know, to a judge and tried to tell, explain to her what was going on, you know, what was happening in the past and what happened. And I kind of was aware of what was going on. And then I've also been to the police department, and I've also been to Douglas County Police Department because the situation escalated to a point where there was like illegal firearms, or I wouldn't say illegal firearms, but just, you know, there was other organizations, other entities checking into the King Supers and the apartment complex to where, you know, to where they were, they were watching, they were watching, it was under investigation. And the FBI has been contacted, and they're aware of it. And, you know, I think even a higher source where it's like CIA and other stuff. So there's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of activity there.
All right.
But, yeah.
All right. Mr. Buckner, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? So thank you very much for coming tonight. Up next, there's a couple of names that have been crossed out, but I think the next one is, is it Trisha? Trisha Miller? Or Trissa?
It's Trisha.
Trissa? Trissa with an E in the middle?
Uh, it's spelled correctly, T R E S A.
Perfect. Trissa, when you are ready to begin, you have three minutes.
Okay, my question is the water bills. They have, they're astronomical. And I got a letter a few months ago, maybe stating that Inglewood's competitive with all the other cities, which is not true, in my opinion. I have family all over, and they do not pay what I am currently paying. And, you know, I know they want me to go on a meter, which is fine, I don't mind, but I don't have nine hundred to a thousand dollars to pay for a meter. So I'd like to know where the solution will lie with this. Because as it stands, I just got my bill today. I am now at a hundred and fifty dollars a month, which is ridiculous for water that I don't feel like I can drink. My sinks are all corroded because of the hard water. So, I mean, I commend what they're doing, you know, with everything, but what are we supposed to do? I'm a single person, you know, I'm not rich. So I just want to know where this solution lies because every few months, the water bill goes up.
Thank you very much, Trissa. Any, anything else?
No.
Uh, Member Noonan Camp, I see you have a question. Go ahead.
I do. Thank you for being here. Have you contacted the utilities department about your bill recently?
Not recently, but, I mean, what are they going to do? What are they going to tell me? I've gone in before, and their only solution was you can make three months' installments on a meter. Well, plus your current bill. Well, I don't have four hundred and fifty dollars a month to pay for that.
I appreciate that, and I understand. The reason I asked is that there is, there has been some kind of almost grouping of some of the bill numbers recently in the new billing system. And so sometimes it looks like it's an inflated number, but it's actually multiple months altogether. I called the utilities this week, and I had a similar situation. So I just wanted to know if you had called them to see if that might be contributing to some of those high numbers.
Yeah, no, it just said that it went up five dollars for some, for some reason, I don't know.
Okay.
You know, so, I mean, I just feel like there's no end to this. And before, who knows what? It's going to be in a few more months, you know. And in all honesty, it makes me want to move out of Inglewood. And it's sad because I've lived here my whole life.
Thank you. That was my only question, and I think we'll have response later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Wright, go ahead.
Thank you. Wait, ma'am?
Was that it?
No, no, yeah, sorry. Still at least one more question. I may have one as well.
So the nine hundred, ten thousand dollars, I am assuming you used to be on flat rate, and they're putting you on a metered rate?
Yes, I inherited my parents' home until I was grandfathered in.
Okay. I believe I'm correct, and my fellow council members will correct me if I'm wrong. But those that, because we're going through a lot of changes, those that were on metered, on flat rate, going to metered, you should not be getting charged for that at that, this current time. Isn't that correct?
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm looking.
I wanted to ask a question, too, but yes, I wanted to know when you, when is the last time they told you that the water meter was going to be, was that a year ago or?
Yeah, it's been more than a year.
Okay, yes, it's much less than that.
Yes.
Okay.
And have you had that meter upgraded yet?
No, I didn't do it.
Good, because you should not be charged for that. So if I could get your contact information, if you leave it with Clerk Clark.
Okay.
City Clerk. Cardile.
Just can't do it tonight.
That's okay.
We could get you in touch with some people that could help you with that.
Okay.
And then based on that, maybe your bills can come into.
May I have a play of order? I'm sorry, this is response to public comment, not questions. Any further questions on that?
No.
So, yeah, thank you, Member Wright. Quick question, Trissa, Ms. Miller. What was your water bill prior?
You know.
So it's one fifty today, correct?
Pardon?
It's about one fifty per month today?
To, to, yes.
Okay.
And it was one forty-three. And then it was one, you know, it seems it's kind of going in five-dollar increments, but over the last two years, it's just, it's gone crazy.
Okay.
So I just, I just don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Especially since I can't use it very often, you know what I mean? It's like, you can't drink it.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mayor Protem, you got?
Sorry, just one quick question for clarification. You currently are on a flat rate. You don't have a meter. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Miller, I don't see any further questions. I'll be giving a response here after the next speaker. So I have a little bit more to add to that, but thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Gary Kozak. Mr. Kozak, good evening. I'm used to asking for a topic, but there is none. So, Mr. Kozak, you have your three minutes when you're ready to begin.
Gary Kozak, Oxford and Le Pan Street. I got a couple of issues coming up. The gentleman that just talked about the water, back in the day when the Inglewood Fire Department was here, they knew that they had a response plan, and I was really hoping the chief would hear this. The big silver tanks that are over at Medical Dairy have got ammonia in them. If one of those were to rupture, there will be several hundred people killed in Inglewood. But is there a response now? They put the fire hydrants around there, back in my day when I was younger, and we were told about it, and it was always kept up to date to us. But since the fire department and all changed, that's no longer there. And that was when I heard about the water and stuff. There is not enough sufficient water close enough to the dairy. There is not enough sufficient water close enough to the dairy, but we've already been told that if an alarm goes off. That we are to evacuate immediately. Now, to go to my other point, Steve, thank you for the invite as far as calling you and talking to you. Uh, that hasn't happened. I've got a new set of teeth. But I will attempt to do that. We're having all these things going on down there on Oxford for the Sam's Automotive Construction Site. Well, the guys are getting paid to come out and mark the utilities, saying the city has refused to tell them or give them any idea on some of them. And the one guy that walked down the market for a new electrical line underground going up Oxford from the rec center. To in front of the new development and across in Oxford. He's asked three different times and nobody's given him anything and he was there four days and he said there's utility lines in there that he cannot find. That's a problem. The other two group that came in to put the gas lines in. They did a fabulous job. They used our street instead of the, the parking area in front of the development. And with that. After they had left, cleaned it all up and hand swept it Friday night or Friday afternoon, they were cited. And said that they had to come back and clean the street. Well, with our water main break right there, they didn't bother to clean the street there until today. They went in and actually sprayed it and vacuumed up all the dirt and stuff that we had from our water main break. And he says, well, we've been delayed because we've had six more water main breaks in, within the city in the last week. Something that the city council may wanna know. And lastly, guys, I am signed up for the later one and I'll speak on that one. We do have some serious problems down there in Oxford, uh, here again with the traffic and. I see no effort for anybody to put a crosswalk across to the recreation center. So as far as that part, I'm good with. And guys, I know you're working.
Mr. Kozak, thank you very much for your time tonight. Um, any questions for Mr. Kozak? See now, Mr. Kozak, thanks again for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, anybody else that was looking to speak for public comment tonight? Just, I know there was some confusion there, but anyone online? City Clerk Carlisle? Nope. Alright, perfect. Um, well, I will be giving a response to public comment tonight, so I'll start with Mr. Downing, um. And I guess, Mr. Kozak, you also brought up the issues regarding, uh, just our emergency plan. So we do contract out with the Rappahoe County regarding our emergency management plan. Um, I think we started that back about twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, somewhere around that time. Uh, but we are actually in the process of actually updating our emergency management plan as well, so that is in the works. I will bring up the fact about the, uh, um, just the hydrants and the, and running out of water. I know we kinda looked at this issue when the Marshall fires also occurred, uh, in Lewisville. Uh, I wanna say that was about four years back. So we are considering all aspects of any type of emergency management response. So. We'll just make sure that some of your concerns are being brought up as part of that process as well. So thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. Gabriel, Mr. Buckner, thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, I'm just gonna refer this to our Chief of Police. I know that he was in attendance tonight. So I'll have him look into this information about, uh, just some criminal activity that has occurred, uh, around King Supers, the Mark's apartment. And just leave it to, um, uh, to our Chief of Police to, to investigate that issue. Uh, I don't have enough information to, uh, state one way or another, but I'll just make sure, uh, our chief will, uh, look into this and provide a response to City Council. Uh, and Ms. Miller, thank you very much for bringing to the attention about the water. I'm sorry that you're going through this. We know that this has been an issue. Uh, in terms of just the water, water billing issues. Um, I am gonna ask you, I think, Mr., yeah, Director Van Wright, he's just outside. He is our Director of Utilities. He's right there in the middle. So he's actually, he can speak more to about your specific concern. Uh, but just for members of the public that are just curious about why the water bills have been going up within the city. Um, you know, there's, just was a lack of investment in terms of just u- updating or, or just maintaining our water. Um, including some of the concerns that you brought up in terms of just improving the quality, the taste, um, and just the hardness as well. We put together a master plan to address those issues and that's part of the reason why you're seeing an increase in your water bills. Uh, and you will continue to see that. So I definitely want you to speak to Director Van Wright. I also wanna just verify some of the numbers that he, that you provided in terms of what your monthly bill are. Uh, he may be able to provide you a little bit of just more information in terms of what you should be expecting. Uh, but that is the reason why you're doing it. We didn't raise our water rates for a long time, up until about twenty eighteen or so is when we started raising them again. Uh, but I think there was about maybe a twenty-year gap where it just stayed very flat. And, um, and so the increase of the water bills is just the fact that we need to improve the maintenance, improve the infrastructure. In, in terms of the water and we understand that it may be a burden to many of our citizens. So. It wasn't an easy decision, but we know that we, it's something that we had to do in order to improve the water and the resiliency of our system, so. But I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, Ms. Miller. Um, and I think I covered everyone's response. Mr. Kozak, thanks for bringing up. Uh, the traffic issue and, and I'm sure that we'll hear more about the, um, uh, about any concerns regarding our public hearing tonight. So thank you for, for coming tonight. Members of council, anything else from, from you on what I may have missed? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, just two things a- about the, the water bill. Actually, in the la- I received a water bill just a couple of days ago. And in that water bill, there is an insert that explains all of the fees that have gone up. In the last, probably really since twenty eighteen and that's why the water bills are going up that much. And it's, um, I know, um, it, it is a problem and we get a lot of calls about that. Um, I just would like to ask, um, for a council request that, uh, for the emergency management. Not only to see if, if, um, Rappahoe County has a plan for this. And if they don't, um, I know the mayor already said he would bring it up, but to make certain that, that would get addressed. In the emergency management plan and the update. Um, then, um. I, I may have had a council request about the, the Sam's property, but I'll email that because I. Don't remember right now what I was gonna ask.
Thank you, Member Russell.
Thank you.
Anything else for members of council? City Manager Lucy, do you have something? I see your lights on, sorry.
That's alright. I just wanted to, we will definitely answer that council request. Can we also provide some information tonight regarding them?
Uh, so, Member Russell, as you probably are aware, and other members of council, there are several different plans that we have related to emergency management. So we have one that's the Emergency Operations Plan, then we have one that's called the Hazard Mitigation Plan. The Emergency Operations Plan is updated periodically. Um, it's meant to be nimble and basically allow us to, um. Respond to any kind of emergency. Um, so it is somewhat general. However, it does have a, a component at the very beginning about hazards. Um, and it does mention that we are at risk, um, for some, um, cold weather-related hazards as well as, um, stormwater hazards. Um, I don't believe it specifically mentions fire, however, um, there also is a hazard mitigation plan. That specifically calls out hazards and actually we're in the middle of, or, uh, we're about to kick off, um, the process. It's a five-year process. Um, we actually got a grant, um, the county got a grant that we're a part of. Um, and so I can definitely, um, in addition to answering the council request. Um, I can also bring up this discussion with, uh, the Emergency Management Office in the county. To see if it's possible to include in the plan that's being updated this spring and should be coming, uh, to you sometime in the summer.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And also that reminds me, um, because Mr. Kozak. Brought up the ammonia tanks at Metal Gold Dairy, um, and now that we're aware of that, can we make sure that we have a plan to address that? If there's ever a problem also?
Absolutely, and I do just wanna mention that one of our twenty twenty-four exercises, we all departments participate. And with the county in E O C, Emergency Operations Center exercises. Last year, one of those was an ammonia plume moving across the city. I don't think we specified the source, whether it was from the train tracks or whatever, whether it was from Meadow Dairy, uh, Meadow Gold. But we definitely have our planning for that and have actually practiced that scenario, so we'll make sure that's in the plan.
Thank you.
Anything further for members of council? Alright. Everyone, thank you very much for coming up for public comments. So we're moving on to Agenda Item Nine. Uh, this is consent agenda items. We, um, there was a question on this one item. This is CB five. The I G A regarding the acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. Uh, Member Russell, you have a question for, I believe, for City Attorney Niles?
Yes, thank you. And, um, I asked this question, why would, um, the acceptance of grant money? Require an ordinance rather than a resolution? Which means that if we had an ordinance, we have to have two votes. If we have a resolution, it only requires one vote.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Russell. Under, uh, City Charter Section eighty, uh, City Council can accept grants and gifts. Generally, we do so by motion rather than resolution. However, Charter Section seventy-nine requires that any contracts with another government entity be approved by ordinance. So when we receive a grant from another government agency or entity and that is memorialized in a written agreement, then we approve it by ordinance. So, uh, this grant is the third grant that we've approved via ordinance this year. Another one was for P D and one for Public Works.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you giving us that information.
Perfect. Any other questions for members of council? See now, can I get a motion to approve nine eight one?
I move to approve nine eight one.
Thank you, Member Russell. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Kemp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six eyes.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten. This is public hearing. We do have a public hearing tonight. This is the public hearing. For a planned unit development at four oh one Inglewood Parkway, uh, to Kimco Development. Um, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Kemp?
Aye.
Member Russell? Aye. Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six eyes.
Alright, perfect. I, I see that we, we have city staff here tonight that's gonna provide a presentation. We have members from Kimco, uh, Development or just the P U D in general. We also have members from the public that are gonna be speaking in favor or against the, uh, the, the, uh, P U D. So anyone that is looking to speak tonight regarding the item, whether it's the presentation, staff, or speaking in favor or against. Can you please rise, raise your right hand and we're gonna have the city clerks swear you in for the public hearing.
Okay. Do you, um, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council? Great, we'll just ask for you to state your name and address or title for the record when you come up.
Alright, perfect. Thank you very much, everyone. Do we have anyone online on this? Nope, okay, perfect. Alright, so I will now turn it over to our, uh, Staff Planner Will Charles to kick off the P U D. Good evening, Will.
Good evening, uh, Will Charles, Planner Two with the Community Development Department. Um, yep, so as mentioned, this, uh, case tonight is for a planning and development. Um, it's just a little bit east of where we are currently, um, at the former Hobby Lobby site. Um, this is approximately a six point two, uh, acre property, um, bordered by Floyd to the north, Inglewood Parkway to the south. Um, Cherokee to the east and then, uh, Alati over to the west. Um, the current property is zoned M U B one, so that's central business district. So same thing as what the site, uh, where. In today is, um, with that transit station area overlay, um, as a additional layer to that, uh, zoning. Uh, then as mentioned, the applicant is Kimco Realty. Um, so just taking a bird's eye view of the property, um, this one is zoned, uh, M U B one. Um, as you can see from here, um, just to the west, that Walmart site, uh, also zoned M U B one. Um, just to the south, those medical office buildings, um, also zoned M U B one and then to the east, um, that same zone district where there is the, um. The high-rise office building. Additionally, just to the north of the property is, um, a well-established R one C, single-family residential zone district. So everything to the west, east and south, M U B one, everything to the north, R one C. Um, a little bit about the history of the site. Um, so since nineteen eighty-eight, when, uh, this, uh. Location was developed, um, it has probably only looked pretty similar to what it currently looks like today. Um, with that Hobby Lobby being the anchor site of that, uh, development until twenty twenty-three, um, when Hobby Lobby left that site. Uh, so that, I mentioned that the, uh, property is owned M U B one, um, and we have a few of these in our code, but this is the transit station area. Specific plan, so it's an overlay on top of that M U B one that has additional restrictions for properties in that zone, in that zoning. Uh, so the TSA plan was adopted in twenty twenty-two. Um, and as you can see, kind of in that bottom right-hand, uh, picture, there are two circles to it, um, a quarter mile and a half mile. Uh, this property falls within a half mile, um, of the TSA plan, um, which requires a zoning of. Or a minimum density of tw- of seventy-five units per acre and a maximum density of a hundred and twenty-five dwelling units per acre. Um, which will be one of the main parts of the, the P U D ask for today. Um, so these are kind of the guiding principles that were, uh, adopted with that TSA plan. Uh, most of them call for, you know, walkable communities, um, really focusing on, you know, local businesses and. Um, things at the, at the ground level. Um, as well as, um, one that's, you know, um, big for this one, which is that last one, which is a diversity of housing types and affordability. Um, so now kinda getting into the actual project itself. Um, the first, uh, preliminary application or D R T meeting with the city was held in August of twenty twenty-three. Um, from then, there's been another one of those, a couple of neighborhood meetings back in March and September. Um, the formal supplemental of the application back in April, um, as well as a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission last month. And then, uh, finally here at City Council tonight. Uh, as far as what is being proposed, there is a two hundred and sixty-unit apartment building planned or proposed for the west side. Of the project, a, and a, um, multi-story, uh, parking garage. As well as a second phase two that, um, is projected for a, um, hotel site. Um, then if a, uh, hotel can't be secured, um, the applicant has added an additional, uh, would add additional a hundred and forty. Uh, dwelling units to that third, uh, that third structure. Additionally, the project is proposing to reduce the, um, surface parking, uh, from, uh, four hundred down to a hundred and forty-six. Uh, and contain the rest of the parking for this, uh, project in that, uh, parking garage. Uh, so if you take a look at the right side of this slide, um, you can kinda notice that, that diagonal red line that runs in the middle. Um, there is a, um, a, um, there's a very large drainage easement that runs through that that's very active. Um, so with that, it's a major impediment to the site. Uh, currently the Hobby Lobby, if you, you know, think about what's currently out there, is planted smack dab on top of that, that easement. Uh, so this project would, you know, uh, remove one of those major hazards of having that, uh, structure constructed on top of it. Um, as well as expand that easement, uh, by additional fifteen feet in either direction. So bring that up to seventy. Um, as far as the development standards on the left side, um, for the most part, uh, they follow very similar things to what are in the TSA and M U B one. Um, both of them have the same goal of pushing structures toward those streets to kinda give a, um, a very pedestrian-oriented. Um, development as far as, um, the buildings being pushed up to those sidewalks. Um, additionally, they are also reducing the max height from a hundred feet down to seventy. Um, and then finally, um, the major one for this planning development is that, uh, reduction in the, um. Overall density requirement. Um, so as, you know, kinda mentioned with this easement, um, it's taking up a rather large portion of the property. It's a little over about an acre of the six acres. Um, this one, so in the M U B one and M U B two, uh, zone districts, the only, um, allowed frontage under the Inglewood. In- Inglewood Code is that frontage A, so that top right one. Uh, so you can kinda see pushed upright to those, those sidewalks. Uh, getting into the landscaping, um, the applicant, um, is, um, basically following everything that's in the TSA plan. Um, that's what, that's what their, um. Uh, their P U D proposes is to follow. Um, so these are kinda the major standards of it, um, and I can have to go through any, if you guys have any questions about them. Um, but basically they'll be following everything that's in the code currently. Um, same thing on this, um, though, there are a couple pieces that are, you know, to be decide, to be decided. Those will follow anything that is in. Um, like I said, the TSA plan and the M U B one zone district. Um, so anything that's not specified will default back to that. That, that, uh, zone district. Getting into parking, um, so for the majority of, um, what's being proposed, um, they are, they are proposing the same as what's in the code. Um, as far as that TSA plan, um, the one difference being that hotel site, um, so a slight reduction from, um, the TSA plan. Which has a one space with a possible reduction down to, um, seven, or. Basically, three quarters of a space per, per hotel room down to a half space per hotel room. Uh, a difference, a difference there, but everything else, um, basically aligned with what's in the plan currently. Um, getting into some elevations, um, I know the applicant probably has some in color that are a little better than these. are a little better than these, but to the west, so that's that Alati Street. To the north, that's if you're looking from Floyd. And then from the east, if you were on Cherokee, looking at the site. Some public improvements, these are one of the more lengthy conditions on the, on the recommendation tonight. But basically, there are these eight public improvements. Most of them follow in the kind of ADA and pedestrian realm of improvements, as well as a multimodal fee in lieu of $65,000, as well as two speed cushions, which are a little too, a little too narrow for this, this aerial, but they're just north of that along Cherokee Street. And so that'd be two, two speed cushions. As far as public comment, we received a letter of support from the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority, and some of their conditions, our recommendations are included in the conditions from P&amp;Z. And then at this, at the point of this presentation being created, there was five public comments. Now there, I believe, are either seven or eight, which are included in your packet as well as handed out to you this evening. As far as recommendation, so, you know, staff provided a recommendation to Planning and Zoning Commission. They added a few additional of their own, as well as including the recommendations from the EDDA or Inglewood Downtown Development Authority. So the recommendation from P&amp;Z is to recommend approval with the conditions listed below. And there are a few. I'm happy to kind of go through those in depth or kind of cliff note them if there's a preference on, on those.
Actually, I wouldn't mind hearing the additional detail on it, so.
Sure.
If you can.
Yeah. So the first one is the Affordable Housing Compliance. So basically, this one says anything that is presented by the Housing Task Force and then approved and adopted by City Council would be required of this project, or anything that City Council requires as part of this PUD process as far as affordable housing. The next one being rather that lengthy list of these public improvements. So basically, all these kind of listed out with the different timelines of when those will need to be, need to be completed. So that's what this two is. So, you know, traffic calming measures on South Cherokee Street, ADA compliance, things of that nature. And so that's, that's this whole kind of two section. Number three is impact park and open space fees. So basically, any fee that are used by Wright Project would need to pay. This project will also need to pay those as part of their building permit submittals. And then fourth is the EDDA requirements. So theirs are kind of broken out into a couple ones as well. So the first one being this larger A, which asks for 10% of units to be affordable in that 80 to 120% AMI range. The next one being accessibility, so 5% of units being accessible. And then C, a Little Dry Creek Greenway Trail. So this would be along that Cherokee Street and offering a more significant setback to allow for a really enhanced trail along Cherokee Street. Permitted uses, there was a request at Planning and Zoning Commission to add dependent care as a permitted use from the PUD. So currently on site, there is a, a childcare facility, and so that was asked to be included in this PUD as a permitted use as well. And then lastly, a drainage report. So this was that the applicant, at the time of building permits, will take and address any offsite drainage analysis that's conducted in the area. I believe that is it for him. Any questions for me?
All right. Any questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I have a question about the actual parcel. So if we're looking at this image here, you see that the yellow dotted line excludes those parking spaces at the bottom of the.
Yep.
The area. Can you identify what that is? It's not clear to me in some of the renderings.
Yeah. It's an unfortunate little piece that's on a different property. It is part of the medical building to the south. So that is additional parking for that structure just to the south.
Okay. And then can you also confirm that to the north of this parcel, the, at the corner of Cherokee and Floyd, that's city-owned property, correct?
The one in the northwestern corner of this, like Floyd, southeast of Floyd and Alati, or the one to the northeast?
To the northeast, the kind of the open lot area at the corner of Cherokee and Floyd.
Yeah. I believe it is. I think so.
Former, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Charles. My question is in regard to the additional requirements, especially, could you return to the slide that had the EDDA requirement on?
Yeah.
I wanted to know, the, we have a note from the EDDA that says they encourage, sorry.
Yeah. Sorry. Are you looking for the?
Yeah. The affordable, or the, yeah. 80 to 120% AMI. I'm trying to understand, or is the EDDA suggesting that we require a 10%, and is that what is being proposed here or recommended here? That we require that 10%, 80 to 20% AMI?
Yeah. So this, this section is taken directly out of the EDDA letter. So their recommendation in this, or their encouragement was to do 10% at 80 to 120. You know, as far as staff and Planning and Zoning Commission, we also had that first one, which is kind of a more broad, you know, have, do what the task force and, and the council adopts, or, you know, what you guys decide to do with affordable housing.
So the official recommendation from P&amp;Z was to do whatever, whatever the affordable, you know, ends up being required from the Affordable Housing Task Force, but this was just a further suggestion that's not particularly tied to the recommendation but was in their letter?
Yeah. I mean, it, you know, I, I think if, if, if you, if you chose to take this exactly, I would probably maybe make that language a little more robust.
Sure.
But yeah, that, that was essentially how it happened.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. How many, how many people attended the neighborhood meetings?
I'll let the applicant kind of say what, I think they took a tally that has an exact number. I know from the two, I believe there was in like the, it was at the Malle Center and one of their buildings, and it was, you know, pretty, pretty full as far as the room went. So I would say probably in the 30 to 40 range for each, for each of the two meetings.
Okay. And on the project details, development standards map where it shows the drainage easement?
Yep.
Is that Little Dry Creek running under there, or is that only stormwater drainage?
I will double check when I sit back down, but I believe it's a storm, storm main that goes through there. Do you know my chance?
It's Little Dry Creek.
Okay. It's Little Dry Creek. Sorry. I apologize. Little Dry Creek.
What is it?
Little Dry Creek. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you.
Member Ward?
This may be more of a question for the applicant, but I'll ask you just in case you can shed some light on it. The, I noticed here the hotel use is asking for a reduction in parking, and I'm one of those turtles that still likes parking. So it's a little strange to me for, particularly for a hotel use. It strikes me that people who would be prone to use a hotel might actually also have a rental car that they need to park somewhere. What is the impetus for a reduction in parking for a hotel? Again, the thing that strikes me is the type of hotel that wouldn't need parking would be a hotel that would cater to transients or other people that might have an adverse effect on the neighborhood.
Yeah. If you don't mind, I think I'll defer, I'll defer that one to the applicant and kind of let them give their thoughts on it.
Okay. Thank you.
And Member Wright?
Well, Member Ward, beating to the hotel parking. When I was reading the information, one of my questions when it kind of confused me a little bit was on the drainage easement.
Yeah.
Will that easement be expended, extended during the construction? Or will it be extended? Because in the packet did say that it may need to be extended from 40 feet to 70 feet in the future, but then as I read further on, it said that it would be done while construction was going on. So I needed to.
I'll take a look at my packet. I'm not sure where that distinction is in there. As far as my understanding, so that there's not, you know, a part of that easement right now that's going to be, you know, under construction as part of this project, i.e. something that's going to expand those pipes as part of this development. It's the actual easement width itself that will be expanded.
So is it pipes or is it an easement? Because it's the drainage.
There's, there's a pipe in the easement. And so the easement itself will be expanded from 40 feet to 70. The pipe itself will be remaining as is as far as this project goes.
Okay. So what's the dimension of the pipe?
I might defer that one to our, our engineering or utilities department and see if one of them has, has an answer for that one.
Okay. Yeah. Because I would like to.
They might come back up on the next one.
Yeah. Because I would like to know if, it would make sense to me that if it's something that we need to be expanded and even, you know, lined during a construction project, why don't we correct something now or plan for the future and take care of it now opposed to after it's all taken care of? So it just makes sense to me. Also, my other question, sorry, I have multiple little things here. The parking structure.
Yep.
How many, excuse me, how many parking spaces will be in the parking structure?
Yeah. So anything that is not, anything that is not contained in that, that surface 140-ish units or spaces that are required by, by the code will be in that parking garage. So, you know, right now, they have those parking requirements listed as, you know, one space per unit for that residential with a, you know, slightly less one for income restricted and then the hotels. So between the, you know, 260 apartment building at one space per acre, the hotel at half a space, so that's about 70 or so. So it, 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 it will encompass all of the parking requirement by this, this, this code. That's not surface parking.
Just a point of information, just to, the reason why we're not giving the numbers is because we're not sure what that second building is going to be, whether it's a hotel or a second residential.
Correct. And, and the applicant can kind of give more information as far as what that range is expected to be. But yeah, I mean, it will contain all of the required parking of, of this chart.
And, and can Kimco choose in, within that infrastructure to add additional parking above what the requirements are?
Yeah. I mean, as far as this is just a minimum requirement, so.
Okay. Perfect.
Any further questions for members, for our staff, before we get to the Kimco Development presentation? Go ahead, Member Russell. I'm sorry. Member Wright, do you have anything else?
No. I, I have more, I think, forward. Yes.
Perfect. Member Russell, go ahead.
So all the emails that you have given us in the packet and the ones that we have tonight are to be considered part of the public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Ward?
Yeah. One more question regarding the setbacks. So the request here is a zero to five foot setback, which I, I'm just going to assume is going to be a zero foot setback because that's what we're allowing. How does that affect the, the build itself, sidewalk access, snow removal, things like that? Does it have an effect?
Yeah. I mean, I, I kind of take these two things to be kind of two sides of the same coin as far as zero to no more than five and five to no more than 15. They're kind of, you know, as far as a lot of planning development standards I've seen, they kind of aim for the same goal, which is these really pushed up to the street frontage. You know, if, if you have, you know, a rather large sidewalk, you could do things like street trees or something like that and that. You know, if you have a narrower sidewalk, maybe you need to push that back to five to get, you know, all that landscaping and activation in front. So I, I, they, in my opinion, they get to similar, similar goals of pushing those buildings up to the, the street frontage.
Okay. So there's not a tremendous effect by reducing that setback to the?
Yeah. I mean, and, and, you know, in kind of both of them, they will have that five-foot parameter, which, you know, kind of gets in that same, that same range.
And the setback doesn't include the public right-of-way, which would be the sidewalk that they have to install?
Correct. And the other major kind of difference between these two is the amount of structure that needs to be right on the setback. So in the code and TSA plan, I believe it's 75% of the structure needs to be really pushed up to that five to no more than 15, whereas this kind of allows, you know, some portions to be five, some portions to be, you know, setback a little bit further than that. So it, again, it kind of gets that same, that same idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Russell?
So along those same lines, how much distance from the building to the street will there be?
Yeah. So that would depend on the amount of right-of-way that's on there. I can try to take a look and see if I can see what that, that number would be when I sit back down, but essentially be, you know, whatever portion of right-of-way is between the actual back of curb and, and the property line.
Okay. So there will be, there is enough right-of-way to require sidewalks for the city. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, any sidewalks that are out there currently would be on, on city right-of-way currently, so.
And they have to be ADA compliant also, correct? I mean, they can't just be two feet what are currents.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll let our engineers clarify, but I believe on any construction project like that, they need to update any ramps, any ramps and sidewalks to be compliant.
Okay. Thank you.
Will, can you make sure you provide an answer as part of this public hearing after the presentation? Is that possible or?
So what was the question?
Are you able to provide an answer to that question regarding the distance?
Yeah. I can try to check on it.
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Will or city staff? We'll still have another chance after the presentation from Kimco, so. All right. With that, I will pass it along to representatives from Kimco Development. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of city staff, members of the public. My name is Carolyn White. I'm the Land Use Counsel for the applicant, Kimco, for this application that's before you this evening. I am here today with Kimco Representative Mark Rickards, who will be speaking tonight along with Sky Stewart from the Pockner Company and Rick Peterson of Oz Architecture. We also have several other members of our team that will be here this evening and available to answer your questions, even though they may not be part of our primary presentation. Just, our presentation is organized as shown on this slide. We're going to do a little quick introduction and overview. We're going to do a little history of the site and a little bit of procedural background. We want to share a little bit more detail, and hopefully this will answer some of the questions that you asked council member about the neighborhood outreach that was conducted, who participated, when it was conducted, how that all played out, what kind of feedback we received, and then a more detailed description of the proposed project itself. And then in conclusion, I'll come back to the podium and link all of that back to the criteria that are in your code for decision-making on a, on a PUD rezoning application. Along those lines, it might be a good idea to just mention briefly that although this application has a lot more detail that you might, than you might typically see in a normal zoning application because it is a PUD, this isn't the site plan, right? We're doing the zoning now. So we're setting the outer parameters of what can be developed on this site. We're establishing the setbacks, the maximum height, maximum density, allowed uses, and so on. But it's not the final engineered site plan, which will be separate. And so some of the detail that I know you all have been asking about, like exactly how many spaces will be in the parking garage. We have an estimate based on what we estimate to be the total number of units, but there might be plus or minus a couple more or less than that depending on how the actual final site plan shakes out, right? Since we're just at the zoning stage tonight. So I just thought it would be worth mentioning that. Although staff highlighted a couple of ways in which this application differs from the underlying zoning, one of the primary reasons that we are before you for a PUD tonight is that we are proposing less density than what is the minimum density required under the TSA overlay, right? The TSA overlay requires 75 dwelling units per acre. And as we're going to explain to you tonight, we think that somewhere around 40 dwelling units per acre is a more appropriate level of density and height for this site, given the surrounding neighborhood. In order to achieve that kind of density, given the site constraints that we have on this site, like that easement running through the middle of it, right? So it's not a developable square. It's really kind of two triangles. The buildings would have to be at least twice as tall as what as what we are contemplating with this application for a PUD rezoning. And that's really the principal impetus for this application before you tonight. Um, so to speak, oh, sorry, here's my slide introducing the rest of the development team. Apologies, I went a little out of order there. Um, so I'd like to start by handing the podium over to Mark Rickards to talk to you a little bit about their history with the site and the evolution of the site and how it came to where we are today.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, for the record, my name is Mark Rickards. I'm a director of development with, uh, Kimco Realty. We, Kimco owns and operates shopping centers across the nation. Uh, seventeen of those are right here in, in Colorado. And, uh, Inglewood Plaza i- is an interesting one, right? So, um, it's gone through two or three generations of anchor tenants. Um, and the city of Inglewood has changed a lot since nineteen eighty-eight, too. Uh, we learned in twenty twenty-two that, that Hobby Lobby was gonna leave and we started to take a, a hard look at the possibility of, of, of redevelopment. And that, that meant we looked at, um, context, really. So in terms of where it is in today's Inglewood, uh, you have a major employment center, which is the wellness district to the east. You have, uh, within walking distance, the Broadway corridor. Um, you have, um, an exciting potential public-private partnership, whi- which is city center. You have transit, uh, a little less than a half mile away. You have a Walmart next door. And you also have a, a vibrant single-family neighborhood to the north. And, and so it was with that in mind that we started looking at conceptual, uh, site plans. Those early talks with staff and with community, uh, leaders, big focus of that was the drainage easement. So as you've seen, the, the layout at easement is very, uh, contrary to site development. It creates a constraint right through the site and to answer, uh, a question that was raised. A few minutes ago, it's a twelve-foot by eighteen-foot, uh, box culvert. We decided to design around it. We decided to avoid the easement and develop on, uh, what Carolyn called the two triangles. That constraint, uh, together with the context and, and, um, and adjacencies is really what led to the conceptual plan that you're gonna see tonight. I, I don't want to belabor the point, uh, I'm sure there'll be questions from, um, council, which we welcome. And it's a design that we're proud of and, and look forward to the discussion. But I'll stop talking and I'll, I'll, uh, turn it over to Sky to talk through some of the, uh, community outreach.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Sky Stewart with the Pockner Company, fourteen eighty Humboldt Street. We're a firm that focus, focuses on community outreach and engagement. That was really fundamental to the conversations we had about designing the site and application. I am trying to find my slides, there we go. Uh, neighborhood outreach, uh, our focus is really around a, a concentric, uh, circle model of outreach. So we really focus on the most impacted neighbors, the most adjacent neighbors first, and build out to that more community-wide engagement. So you'll see an example of that here, um, also showing examples of the types of groups that we met with as part of this process. Moving on to the next slide, you'll see in this timeline, our outreach actually began well over a year ago with meetings with key individuals prior to application, uh, and then has moved on to include those community meetings that were referenced in Will's presentation. We had two official community meetings held in March and in September of twenty twenty-four that are shown on this timeline, along with several other individual and small group meetings. Those community meetings were well-attended. Um, Councilmember Russell, we had approximately forty attendees at the first meeting and about twenty-five at the second meeting. Our outreach also extended to groups like the downtown development authorities, leadership and board, the Inglewood Chamber and the Cushing Park Neighborhood Organization, which really ensured broader engagement and feedback. Uh, and we're very proud to have the DDA's support tonight. Through those outreach efforts, we really follow a model of inclusive planning, where we take what we hear from the neighborhood and the community and really ensure that the decisions that are made about the site and the application reflect what we have heard. In those meetings with the community, we heard a lot about traffic, parking and density, which is what you'll see reflected here on this slide. And our application and the noted conditions that were explained as part of Will's presentation are really a result of that feedback. Uh, we heard a lot of active, a lot of feedback about activation of this site and the hotel use being a really positive thing, something that the community was excited about, and also providing new housing options. Kimco's worked really hard to find the right balance on this site to provide a transition to that single-family neighborhood to the north and to continue to manage traffic and parking with this application. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rick Peterson to talk a little bit more about the design.
Thank you, Sky. Mr. Mayor, uh, council and staff, um, my name is Rick Peterson. I'm a principal with Oz Architecture in Denver at three thousand three, uh, Laramore Street. Uh, we've heard about the, um, the challenges of this diagonal, uh, across the site. Uh, we really, uh, I want to emphasize the opportunities that we're seeing in addressing that challenge. And that is, uh, as Mr. Charles, uh, described earlier, the ability to, um, uh, position the buildings against the street to satisfy the vision of a, of a TOD, walkable, pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. And what you're seeing here, um, on the left is the, uh, larger building, the, uh, multifamily, uh, that's been mentioned. Um, that is currently, uh, envisioned as four to five stories and a minimum of, uh, two hundred and sixty units. Uh, opposite that, in the purple, you'll see, uh, uh, the position of, um, what's been referred to as either a hotel or multifamily. Between those really are, is the parking that, uh, supports both of those and that's both in the surface parking from, uh, approximately hundred to a hundred and forty-six spaces. Um, and then as been mentioned, uh, the balance of the parking would be satisfied in the parking structure uh, along Floyd and that is in the gray to the north. Uh, the next slide really takes this image and shows you the landscaping, um, concept where we're really replacing, um, acres of asphalt with, um, greenway and open space, uh, to really, uh, enhance the pedestrian experience and the connectivity through, uh, the middle of the site that you're seeing. Last two slides really are to show the, uh, uh, conceptual character of the, of the proposal. Um, and I, I would point out that, um, uh, what you're seeing is the, in the height and the massing, um, has, has been mentioned, the idea is that, uh, we're, this is really compatible with a low, lower, uh, uh, density of the neighborhood to the north. And then in terms of the building materiality, um, and the character, uh, the idea is that this is sympathetic and, and, um, uh, compatible, uh, with the, uh, the, the heritage of the nature, uh, the heritage of the, uh, neighborhood. Uh, which is, when I say heritage of the neighborhood, that's a combination of materials, brick and durability. What you're seeing here on, on the left is the parking structure along Floyd and then on the right is the multifamily. Um, and then in the middle is the entry to this, um, greenway that is atop the, uh, existing, uh, easement. With that, I'll, I'll hand it back to Carolyn.
All right, thank you. So, um, I'd like to just conclude by walking through the criteria that are applicable to this decision. I know that staff covered this quite thoroughly in their written staff memo that's in your packet and we also covered it in a written letter that we submitted that is also in your packet. So I'll try to walk a fine line between being concise and thorough because after all, these criteria are the yardstick by which you'll be measuring our application and we want to make sure that we are really clear in how this application meets all of those applicable criteria. So I've listed them here on the screen, I'm not gonna read them all to you. Um, I'll just mention that there's some cross-references in the code, so this is criteria actually combining from a couple of different code sections to represent the cumulative total of all of the criteria that are applicable here. So the first one is that it generally furthers the purpose of the code and that it promotes the health, safety and welfare of the community. And in the staff report in particular, the staff described a couple of ways in which this is accomplished. Um, one of them is to remove a building that is sitting on top of the box culvert or the water pipeline or Little Dry Creek, however we describe that area, and also to, um, agree with the city that we're going to dedicate a wider area of easement so that the city will have m- more ease in accessing its facilities in the future, especially since, you know, there'll be more space and more ability. There's, there's not gonna be any structures over the top of it. In doing that, that of course, you know, exacerbates a little bit the site constraints that were evaluated earlier, but that is very consistent with some of the purposes in the, in the code. And, um, in a minute, I'll talk about the purposes in the comprehensive plan. But also throughout the code, there is a reference to talking about, um, ways to provide more housing, more appropriate housing, providing more housing near transit. All of those are things that are accomplished by this proposed PUD rezoning. And, um, let me go now to the next slide, which is consistency with the comprehensive plan, the next criterion. The very first objective listed on this slide, three point one, it's almost as if it were written for this particular site, right? That's a, it's referencing exactly what we're talking about. Opportunity for redevelopment associated with obsolescent land uses in proximity to major transportation investments. You, uh, the city acknowledged that with the transportation overlay, that there ought to be some, uh, change in use, uh, immediately adjacent to this major transportation investment that's been made. But it's also the case that retail is fundamentally changing. And Mark is obviously much more qualified to speak to that than I am and, and you are welcome to ask him some follow-up questions about that. But there's no question that, um, what is being proposed here is really an evolution of the appropriate use of this site, serving as a buffer between the single-family residential to the north and, um, and the more intense commercial to the south and also in keeping, to the maximum extent possible, with some of the goals and policies around transit there. And we've listed just a couple of the others desirable amenities such as quality housing and also talking about some of the, um, specific infrastructure improvements that will be made associated with this project. Um, supporting the intent of the proposed zone district, including the thresholds for the base zone district. As was shown in staff's charts just a moment ago, there's really only a few very small, minor deviations from the base zone district. Overall, this project is intending to comply in most respects with the base zone district. The most significant change is with that transit overlay minimum density from seventy-five DU to the forty DU that we're proposing. And actually, we're also proposing to, uh, somewhat limit the uses compared to what would be allowed there today with the addition of that dependent care that was recommended to be added by the planning commission. Um, so it definitely meets some of these goals under, for the underlying proposed zone district as well. Um, you also have a set of general rezoning criteria that are applicable here and one of them is shown on the screen and that is, it's necessary for one of the following. There's, and one, and one of those things is there's been a material change in the character of the area. And I think Mark referenced this just a little bit ago when he talked about, um, the information that Hobby Lobby was gonna be closing. And although Kimco, you know, has a ton of experience in retail and a lot of great contacts in the market, it has been very challenging to secure a replacement anchor tenant of that size because that type of retail is simply not what the consumer demand is supporting these days. And, um, there's also been some changes, again, uh, Mark's more qualified to speak to this than I am, but really in sort of terms of how the pass-by traffic views this site, right? Inglewood Parkway is no longer the primary, um, cross-traffic across. It's Hamden now, which is removed and separated by that office building. And it really makes it very challenging for this to be a successful retail site. But it is a, um, great potential for the type of, uh, multifamily that's being proposed here and hopefully mixed use with a potential for a hotel. Um, the next criterion is, uh, no significant impact on surrounding property and any anticipated impacts will be reasonably mitigated by sound planning, design and engineering practices. Um, we've already talked quite a bit about the drainage easement and some of the ways in which what we're proposing to do is hopefully gonna make that a lot more useful and accessible and functional for the city and also, uh, you know, sort of try to, as Rick said, turn that challenge into an opportunity for this site in terms of how we design the site. Um, also what we're proposing to do here is to really listen to the neighborhood and respect the interests and concerns of the community in terms of what feels like a suitable level of density to be immediately adjacent to their community. Um, and that is one of the ways in which this application is proposing to mitigate potential impacts to adjacent properties. Um, and also, as was presented by Mr. Charles earlier, uh, the applicant has agreed to also install some traffic calming measures that are actually out into the neighborhood, not directly adjacent to or on the site or even a hundred percent driven by the site, but are intended to mitigate not only potential future impacts of this application and development, but also to remedy some of the existing concerns that were expressed by the neighbors about how traffic functions in that general area. Um, and then some of these PUD-specific criteria, these, these are criteria that are, uh, intended for the city to say, hey, we're only gonna use PUD when it really is giving us something special, something custom, something unique, where there's a real need to have flexibility and where it's providing benefits beyond just the immediate property or property owner. And, um, we think that that is absolutely met in this instance and that was also echoed in the staff report. Uh, for example, to mention again, the drainage easement, right? Really improving that facility for the city, but also doing some things abo- beyond the property and beyond what is being driven by this application, such as the traffic calming measures out into the neighborhood. And all of the deviations from the standard that are being proposed here, like you talked about earlier, just those minor changes in the build-to line, for example, are all being looked at really customized to this site and why we think it's appropriate at this site for the building to be a little closer to the street and create that, that, um, pedestrian-friendly environment. And if you look at the graphic illustration that Mr. Peterson showed a moment ago, that's gonna be a heavily landscaped area. We have some really, uh, strong landscape standards that are incorporated in here. So it will be, uh, an improvement over what the base case would be under the minimum requirements in the zoning or, uh, left to its own devices as it is. And then also, of course, taking advantage of multi-modal transportation in the vicinity. That, um, really goes to the question that was asked about the reduced parking on the hotel, half a space per u- half a space per key instead of a full space per key, which happens to be industry standard, but it also acknowledges the fact that this is in close proximity to transit and that there's really an increased use of ride-sharing services for hotel guests in the Denver metro area as well as around the country. And that if we don't need it, we don't want to build another sea of parking here because you've already got a sea of parking and we want to, like, customize, right-size the parking to what we think the demand is actually going to be. Uh, so that concludes the formal presentation. Uh, we are available to answer your questions. And I do just want to briefly mention for the record that, um, the applicant is in agreement with the conditions as proposed and as described in the staff report. If the council should, um, uh, be inclined to discuss or consider additional conditions or modifications to those conditions, we would just request the opportunity to come back and address council on that point so we make sure we understand what it is you're asking for and whether or not we're gonna be able to agree to it. So with that, we ask for your approval of the PUD application that's before you tonight and we look forward to answering your questions.
Ms. White, we'll start with questions at this moment, but Ms. White, Ms. Stewart, thank you very much for, uh, uh, thank you very much for the presentation as well as Mr. Rickards and Mr. Peterson. Uh, we'll start with questions, Member Wright and then Member Ward, go ahead.
Thank you, um, thank you for all the information, I appreciate it. So I have two questions, please. Are there any discussions currently with any hotel brands or anything like that to develop a hotel?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Rickards to answer that question.
Thank you for your question. Um, the process that we have in mind is to, uh, try to not look past a, um, hopefully a successful first and second reading for the PUD. The, the next step would be to look for a JV partner on the residential side and at the same si- at the same time, start to think about timing to look, um, nationally for a national hotel brand. This would be a, a branded hotel. Uh, and we've heard, uh, a lot of positive things about a potential hotel in terms of from the, uh, at the neighborhood outreach meetings and I, I attended the twenty twenty-three city center charrette where I know the hotel was talked about, too. So the answer is no, we're not trying to get ahead of ourselves and market things ahead of time. The, the thought would be to kind of go one step at a time, but it would be a national brand.
Okay, and, and my concern is that we're talking hotels, people would be very excited about that and then it doesn't happen. Um, so I, I understand not putting, um, we don't want to put the cart before the horse. My next question is, has there been any studies on the impact? Um, we're doing a lot of development of multifamily. Any studies on the impact to our police? Any studies on the impact to our police, our fire department, our emergency services? And this might be a city question, on how we may need to increase those resources, and our general infrastructure? Any type of studies on that at all?
Mayor, council member, what I would say is, we submitted all of the studies in our application that were required by the code for this. That's not one of them. I, I will say, though, that I would expect that in some of the city planning documents that established what the desired uses were for this area in general, long-term, particularly at the proposed higher densities, there was probably some evaluation of that in the aggregate for the entire area, but I don't think we have any data to speak to the specifics of this particular parcel.
Yeah, I think that's something the city needs to evaluate. Thank you so much.
Actually, before, Ms. White, are you able to speak to the stormwater requirements of the plan? I know that that's part of our, part of our, just requirements for that area. There is water quality, stormwater, that is being met by your PUD, PUD plan, correct? Or you had conversations with staff regarding that?
We, as a team, are able to speak to that, but I personally am not. I'm going to invite someone more knowledgeable than I to speak to it, but also mention that we do have a condition of approval for an updated evaluation of drainage when we get to the site plan development stage.
Right. Thank you.
Hello, John O'Rourke. I'm a principal with Harris Coker Smith, 1120 Lincoln Street, Suite 1000, Denver, Colorado. Yes, we have done a preliminary drainage study as part of the requirements for this rezoning, and then as part of the next step, site plan, civil CD package, we will do a final drainage study, and we will be providing detention water quality to meet current standards.
Thank you, Ms., thank you very much, Mr. O'Rourke. Next question from Member Ward, go ahead.
Just a quick note for the clerk. The slides that were presented by the applicant tonight do not match the slides in my packet. This is not the first time this has occurred. It would be good to have a record that matches what was presented tonight for the packet while I consider these matters.
I was just giving the updated presentation tonight.
Mayor, if I could speak to that, that is, I noticed when I was reviewing the online packet this weekend in preparation for tonight's meeting, that the version of the slide deck that we provided to the clerk last week was not the final version, and I brought the final version with me tonight and asked the clerk to substitute it. So that, that is our, we are responsible for that, and I apologize, but we do have the current one now, and hopefully you'll have an opportunity to review that between that and our next meeting.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. You noted that the hotel industry standard is half a parking space per key. Do you have a source for that, or is that just widely-known lore?
I'm going to ask Mr. Peterson to speak to that.
It's generally recognized as the industry standard. We can provide you some data, though. It's a good question.
That would be very helpful, considering my decision.
Absolutely.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being here tonight. And I do appreciate that you have consented to some of these conditions that were added by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I wanted to, there's some unknowns in those conditions. I wanted to see if I could get your reaction to some of that, specifically the affordable housing compliance. We have not, as council, have not yet discussed this, but we have had the Affordable Housing Task Force that has brought forth recommendations. Have you seen those recommendations, reviewed it, and found, you know, some of the recommendations within that to be stuff that you thought would be, you know, suitable to development? What I'm concerned about is, we, you know, just because you, we pass a zoning change doesn't mean the project's going to get built, and I would hate to, you know, pass some requirement in the meantime, that would make the whole thing not pencil. Do you have any reaction to, to that, or reaction to what, what those affordable housing requirements might look like?
Mayor, council member, well, thank you very much for that question, and I was hoping for the opportunity to clarify, since you mentioned it earlier. What I would say is that the applicant is very aware of the discussions that the city is engaged in with the Affordable Housing Task Force. We have seen the report, we have heard the discussion around it, and you'll notice that the condition that actually ended up getting written in that regard says that the applicant will be pleased to deliver whatever is required by an ordinance that City Council has adopted at the time of building permit, meaning that, you know, whatever you adopt citywide, we understand that we would have to comply with at building permit. And in terms of the specifics of what's in the report and, and what Kimco thinks they will be able to comply with, I'll let Mr. Rickards speak to that. But we think that's really the fairest way to do that, rather than to try to negotiate some kind of custom thing just for this project. If you adopt an ordinance citywide that applies to everyone before we've come in for a building permit, then this project will comply with it.
Yeah. I think Carolyn covered it pretty well. I guess the only two things that I would add is, it's hard to write an affordable housing policy in, in code in a way that does what I think you were saying, meaning it has a meaningful impact and doesn't stop development, but also encourages mindfulness. I, when I talked about the next steps at, when I was last up at the mic, we talked about looking for a JV partner and talked about, you know, we, I am not trying to set a land speed record for a building permit on this site. I would respectfully hope that we can accomplish the rezoning. I think the city has some work to do for an affordable housing policy, but lovely, with lovely part of the conversation, I've had experience from five or six states in terms of how they do it. So I, I do trust the process. I do think that it is a fair ask to say that we acknowledge that when we come in with a building permit, the adopted affordable housing policy applies to the project. I, I do think that's a fair, that's a fair condition.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, and I would, I would certainly, you know, be certain, certainly interesting to get your feedback when we're developing that policy as to how it would impact the development. Thank you.
Be happy to.
Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not exactly sure who my question is for. It could be for Mr. Rickards. I don't remember if, if you said this, Carolyn, that retail is fundamentally changing, and that Mark could address that question. I mean, I find it very interesting that you do retail, but it's changing, and I want to know how that applies to this property.
Sure. I'm going to, I'm going to say two or three things, and you can redirect me if I, because I want to make sure I answer your question. There's, there's a couple of factors. What Kimco likes to find on a, a commercial shopping center is a grocery-anchored center. We think that's strong. It's our, really our base model for how we go about open-air shopping center development or management. We looked really hard for a grocery anchor, and the market saturated, we couldn't find one. When you are looking for a secondary anchor, I think one of the things, one of the kind of calculus is, where is the pass-by traffic? Right? So all of the traffic passing by on Hamden sees Office Depot, or sees maybe Chuck E. Cheese, but sees things on the road and says, oh, that's where it is, maybe I'll stop. It becomes, the, the anchor that you choose becomes more difficult when you don't have that pass-by traffic. Now, there's some exceptions, like Walmart, people know where they are. I would say Hobby Lobby might be an exception, they, people know where those are. But you start, your, your, your Venn diagram of possible anchors gets smaller and smaller if you don't have the pass-by traffic you need. So you're in a secondary Class B or Class C market. I'm happy that we have a car museum in there right now. I still haven't gone in to see it. I've just looked at their website, but I, I, no, I'm, I'm happy that we can fill, that we can fill vacancy. But I think you start to look at the center in terms of highest and best use if you're going to struggle to find a grocer or the right anchor. I, I hope that answers your question.
It does answer my question. I, I appreciate that. Although I am concerned about the lack of places to shop in Inglewood, period, and putting more people in here.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Member Nunez.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions. Mine is also around the idea of, maybe we can get a hotel. If we don't, we can add more units. My understanding is that if you do add the additional 140 units, you end up at 400, which still puts you at 66 units per acre, which is still around 10 under the requirement. Can you speak a little bit more to your confidence that you could secure a hotel, and why maybe not just go straight for the, the additional units and get you closer to that zoning requirement, rather than pursue the hotel? And if you do pursue the residential units, does that change any of the surface parking that you're thinking about?
There was a couple of questions there, but I, I don't mind going through one at a time, just let me know if I missed one. The, do I have a high confidence level that we can land a hotel? I, I, I think it's important to say it needs to be a nationally-branded hotel, it's not any hotel. I think that, that narrows it only a little bit, but I think that's, that's important to Kimco as a, as an owner. The hotel market is an interesting one. We've had some sites where we thought it was the, an amazing hotel location, and we've had difficulty finding one. So I, I can't tell you that I have, like, a 90% certainty that we'll get one. I can tell you that we'll act, we will, we will look very hard, very actively. And I think the, the flexibility of a PUD appealed to us, because we didn't want it to sit vacant if we couldn't find a hotel. So I think the ability to say Plan A is a hotel, Plan B is, is more residential, I appreciated that the PUD gave us the flexibility to say that, which we, you know, put in our, in our narrative, not as like, you know, we weren't sure which one, but because that way we don't have to come back and modify the PUD.
And how would that affect the parking if you were going with Plan B?
Okay. So in a world where it's a hotel, I would prefer that the hotel use surface parking, and I would prefer that the garage serve residential in terms of being able to secure that parking. The surface parking is somewhere around 140, maybe it's 120 in the final design, when you look at green space and islands and everything. A hotel would typically be 100 to 120 rooms. I also think that the residential building, the natural sort of programming for that is, new residents can park right up front, and it's like, you know, you're leasing spaces. And I didn't want to, I didn't want to end up constrained on the hotel side by a shared parking lot, if, if that makes sense. Certainly willing to talk, I know the code says, the code says it's one space per hotel room, which can get reduced by 25%, so that's 0.75 spaces per hotel room. Certainly willing to discuss that if that's a concern with the council.
And would you maintain the same number of surface lot parking spaces if it's residential?
We would want at least, we would want a minimum of one space per residential unit. It would be a little higher than that, and that goes to how much is in the, the garage as well. The, the plus-minus number on the garage was around 90 spaces, just on the floor plate, and that four levels, that's 360. That means that we can, you know, it's not all guests, it's not all studio apartments, not all one-bedroom apartments, and it means we have some flexibility there. I think we were trying to set a minimum without making it, it seems like it came across like it was a maximum, but that wasn't the intent.
That's helpful. And then I have a couple other questions. Bear with me.
Sure.
I, I appreciate that you are trying to utilize a challenging parcel here with, with the easement, and I appreciate that the triangles and the parking lot and the things that you've considered. Were there other configurations that you considered that you thought were workable? And, you know, you mentioned in your presentation, this, this desire to reduce the sea of parking, but this actually maintains quite, quite a small sea of parking, I would say, with the, with the requirement actually to only have landscaping on the periphery, not even to have the islands, I believe, in the 140 lots, spaces. So I'm curious, is there an opportunity to add more green space to that, or did you consider other, other configurations?
So, and, and I'm happy to bring up my landscape architect. What, what we've said is that we're going to meet landscape code, and then we also provided some quantities that are in a little excess of landscape code. I really think the, the colored site plan slide, now I can go back to it, but that's a, you know, that's a concept of how green it could be, and that's why I'm, I was saying that the parking lot is, maybe it's 140, maybe it's a little less. We, what we plant on top of the easement, I think, needs to be, we need to be mindful of that for future, the city's in charge of maintenance and repair. But I, I, I saw our conceptual plan as, as having a lot of green space, and like, even in excess of the code. So were, were you, were you concerned that we could do more, or did you think that we could, should be more, like on the, for instance, between buildings, was that sort of your focus, or was your thought just on the overall amount of green space?
Sure. I was just curious if you would consider other configurations. I think that the plaza and the northwest corner is, is laid out quite attractively, and then when you kind of have the other side, which is largely asphalt with, I think, some peripheral green space, still becomes a challenge for some of the neighboring properties and residential areas, and so that's something I was curious if you had considered other options.
Well, I'm certainly willing to consider that, especially as we go into more detailed design, for sure.
That's great. Can I ask one more, Mayor? My last question is, is building off of Member Russell's, is, did you consider more mixed use for this site? Did you analyze its, its ability, besides grocery, to do more kind of ground-floor retail in any of these locations?
So in terms of, oh, so in terms of, of a design that would have ground-floor retail of residences, residential above?
Or in the hotel.
Or residential above the hotel?
Or, I'm saying ground-floor retail in the hotel, or something more mixed.
We, we did on an, in, early basis, consider whether this was a good market for ground-floor retail. Honestly, the, the small shop retail along Inglewood, as you head towards City Hall from this site, is a lot of vacancy, and our thought was, our, our thought was that it would be best to, to go with multifamily and hotel, rather than try to do all three, and have retail on the ground floor.
Thank you.
Mr. Rickards, I, I have three questions. And apologies for mispronouncing your name earlier.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm still trying to get to the, the question regarding the affordability requirement. There's two recommendations, or at least the way that I kind of take this, there's two different recommendations that I'm seeing. One from Planning and Zoning regarding the Affordable Housing Task Force. And to me, when we talk about, when that committee looked at it, or that task force looked at it, they looked at it from a 30% to 80% AMI, right? The way that I take it. The recommendation from our DDA is asking for 80 to 120%. So what I'm trying to understand is the feasibility of this project. I'm assuming it's probably more likely at 80 to 120, but can it get done between the 30 to 80% AMI, as you see it?
My expectation is that the city will land at some percentage that's recommended for affordable, whether it's 30 to 80 or 80 to 120, and then also have a fee and lieu option. And I think we would want to look at all three of those. I can tell you that, that Kimco and, and when we normally partner with a JV partner, it's not an affordable housing project. So what we have to look at on the financial side is, okay, like, we're building, we're building the same building, and how many of our units need to be at, at whatever, at whatever AMI is, is, is landed on. I am not prepared to tell you on the financial side where exactly that breakpoint is for the project. I can tell you that the, I will look at it as the initial building plus the parking garage, and then the supplement to that would be whether that's a hotel or residential, in terms of how it breaks down.
Thank you, Mr. Rickards. Okay. I think that does answer that question. Trying to think if I should ask this question. I think you've kind of gone over this. The, the reason for this PUD is the fact that you are asking for less units than the, 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 what is it, the TOA?
TSA overlay.
TSA overlay, yeah, thank you. Currently requires, is that strictly just because of the easement? Is that strictly just Little Dry Creek, or is there some other, you know, just economical pressures that's keeping you from building what our TSA overlay is requiring?
So let me, I, I can answer that this way. In terms of, in terms of the right height, that we think the right height is for the surroundings, we think four and five stories is the right height. If there was no, there was no easement, I think we would be close on the development. In terms of whether we, you know, once you start going eight stories, it's a different construction type, and we can talk about how many units, you know, you don't want to build so many units that you that you can't, on the absorption rate, you can't rent enough a month to get where you need to be in terms of the right number. So I respect what you're saying on the supply side, that there's a real need in the Denver area for housing. And it feels like more is better no matter what. The TSA overlay has a minimum density, I think that's the intent behind it. There was no ability to work within that and ask for a variance. That's just how the code is written. We needed to rezone in order to build less than 75 to 125 units an acre.
Thank you. And last question. Obviously, we're talking about if this gets approved, this is what this site potential could look like. What if it doesn't get approved?
That's a good question. We would continue to try to operate it as best we could as a retail shopping center.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Rickards. Member Ward?
Just a quick question about the northwest corner of the parcel. When I look at the conceptual site plan, it says existing offsite property. If my memory serves me correctly, this may be actually a city-owned property? Did you consider acquiring that as part of your plan? It kind of carves out a weird sort of wedge there.
Which one?
It's this one. Yes, my understanding is it's city-owned property. And it's currently a playground for Stepping Stones Montessori School. I also understood there might be some contamination on it. I'm certainly willing, if the city wants to talk about whether it's clean or not and should be part of the project, that's, you know, I'm willing to discuss. But from what I understood, it was city-owned property that was a former gas station or had some contamination issues.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? I don't see any. We're going to open it up to the public. Thank you very much, Ms. White and Mr. Rickards. We do have, I think, a total of eight speakers, four on each side. So I'm just going to go back and forth on the opposing and the favoring side, one by one. So up first, we'll start with the opposing. I have David Allen here to speak. Good evening, David. If you could just state your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes to provide your point of view as well.
All right, my name is David Allen, and I live in Highlands Ranch. Full address, we're good.
I think, do we need the full, we need the full address for a public hearing, go ahead.
745, oh, sorry, 9354 Princeton Street, Highlands Ranch, 80130. Cool. All right, so good evening, thank you. This is both fun and terrifying. My name is David Allen, I grew up here in Inglewood. My childhood home was purchased in 1976 by my grandma for $30,000. I attended Maddox Elementary, Flood Middle, and Inglewood High School. I spent my weekends and summers riding my bike and visiting places like Fantastic Nathan's and Cinderella City, Red and Jerry's Arcade, and eventually the drive-in movie theaters. None of these are here today, most have been replaced with housing. Four years ago, my wife and I opened up the Ritual Haunted House. We are currently in the old Country Buffet building. We're doing pretty well there, and we love what we do. We were currently looking to expand into a year-round business. We've been exploring escape rooms, lines up perfectly with what we do. Kimco actually just offered us the Dollar Tree space next door. Interesting, because we just learned about this recently. We've also been trying to get into Hobby Lobby since they left, and as soon as we caught wind. Last week is when I found out about this, listening to the city council meetings online. And then I found the 1,200-page packet. I read most of it, there's a lot. Reading the proposal, we were not actually even named as a tenant. The car museum was, and a hearing aid center that hasn't even been in there for five years, they were named as a tenant. Not sure why we weren't listed. We pay a year-round rent, we pay pretty crazy high taxes because we're entertainment. We also pay the additional Inglewood sales and use tax. I really don't see a difference between us and them. We employ over 60 staff members, most of them live here in Inglewood. And we draw each year over 10,000 people through our doors every Halloween season. I know for a fact that this positively impacts the surrounding businesses. The proposal states that all the affected businesses have been informed of this project. I have not heard one word from Kimco. We're currently trying to get more information regarding it. I mostly just want to know what the timeline for this project is, has this greatly impacts my business, my family, everything? We'd like to expand, but we're taking a pause just to see what happens with this now. The affordability was touched on several times. My concern is that that has not even been defined. Not that I can find, I don't know what affordability in this packet means. And it only being the 10% of what's being considered, I just don't want to see it as the same as Art Walk next to Walmart, Avalon where Flood was, the Oxford stations, and the rumored soon-to-be Sam's Automotive possible apartments. My goal here is not to stop a project because of my business, because I believe in development and building. My concern is that this is just another paycheck, if needed.
You have three minutes, Mr. Allen.
I got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And yeah, there's no questions on this portion, but thank you very much for your time tonight. Andrew Forlines, you're speaking in favor of this. Good evening, Mr. Forlines. When you are ready, if you could just give your name and your address, and then you can provide your view as well.
Yes, of course. Andrew Forlines, I'm at 4820 South Inca Street here in Bellevue Park area. In general, I am for development. I do think that it's, considering the area around, right-sized, there are a lot of large multifamily condo boxes going up. I'm thinking of the Oxford and Windermere, which is next to the Sam's Development, which seems to be a lot of housing without very much green space or infrastructure in that regard. But in general, in favor of getting more neighbors and redeveloping some of this sea of parking and dead retail. I do want to just ask, and I'm not sure where in the development plan this would be considered, but making sure that we're thinking sustainable and forward-thinking with our energy use, whether or not solar capture, solar panels would be incorporated in the build, whether or not they would be looking at using heat pumps as opposed to fossil fuel burning heat sources, just some of those things, you know, and also if there's an embodied carbon plan that would be associated with this project to make sure that we're developing right the first time, so that we're not locked into 30, 40 years of utilities that are burning fossil fuels. So just some concerns, but in general, I do appreciate the consideration that has gone into this and the vetting that's happening. So overall, looking forward to not just this development, but the whole area here, civic center to downtown, considering that this space could be used, I think, more efficiently, more optimally for the community and getting those mixed-use spaces and more green spaces in general. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Forlines. Up next is Rebecca Kramer. Good evening, Ms. Kramer. If you could just state your name and your address?
Yes, my, thanks. My name is Rebecca Kramer, I live at 3363 South Lafayette in a highly multifamily densified area where the build-outs have gone to three stories, built sidewalks to sidewalks. So I have a bit of experience with the overdensification of Inglewood. And I am against the building of another large apartment building in Inglewood. I think we need another one like we need a sharp stick in the eye. I don't think we have yet been able to absorb the effects of all of the large build-out across 285 by the old Inglewood Elk site and the old Sports Authority site. There's been a ton of multifamily build-out over there. I jotted down a few of my thoughts, because I tend to go long. The city has been overdensified incredibly in recent years. It's caused the erosion of the quality of life as we in Inglewood have known it. The report produced by Kimco, I was trying to go through the 1,200 pages, it provides that according to their own analysis, the market will not support additional high-density multifamily units in this area. That's one reason they are looking to go with the lower high-density versus the higher high-density, because their own analysis shows that the market won't support those apartments. 285, or Hampton, as we like to call it around here, is a parking lot at most times during the day. It cannot absorb more traffic. They claim to have a traffic study in there, but what I've known from the overdensification in Inglewood is as the traffic studies occur, they fail to take in recent builds anywhere from two to six years. And that's specifically with the Noble Building that was built on the Bullock property. I went back and forth with the city on that for 18 months. So one of Inglewood's biggest problems is the lack of businesses and retail. If you go down Inglewood Parkway, as Kimco stated, there's a ton of open retail. There's nothing in it, it's a ghost town. And a lot of Broadway is the same. In fact, I understand from a community meeting the other night that the daughter of the Walmart empire is buying up the businesses as they're selling along Broadway. I'd like to know what those intentions are, but the old Kaufman shop and the Irish pub and another building have recently been purchased by the daughter of Walmart. The report also mentioned that 5% of the units will be ADA-compatible, but it mentions in the same paragraph that 14% of Inglewood has an ADA-compliant need. We have, I think, the highest in all of Colorado. There are also traffic calming measures that are proposed for Cherokee. Rather than putting in traffic calming measures, it would just be nice not to put in the apartments, and we wouldn't need to calm traffic, and that wouldn't exist. I am concerned about the lack of sun exposure that this is going to cause on Floyd. There are diagrams.
Ms. Kramer, you have three minutes, or I.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kramer. Up next is Hillary Portell. Good evening, Hillary. If you could just state your name and your address?
Good evening, Hillary Portell. I'm the Executive Director of the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority. I live at 1124 South Milwaukee Street in Denver. Our board appreciates Kimco Realty's commitment to this site and their intent to redevelop it, especially considering challenging economics and the unique constraints related to the stormwater public easement. This project would turn around a largely, mostly vacant parcel that is creating a sense of blight and nuisance activity. It would create important new reinvestment momentum in the city center area. It would create new local economic activity, including local tax revenue, housing options, and related customer and visitor spending on daily goods and services. This would particularly benefit stores and restaurants on the South Broadway area within walking distance of the proposed apartment community. At the same time, the DDA board must consider its charge to advance the 2021 Inglewood Downtown Plan, which was informed by the 2016 Inglewood Comprehensive Plan and extensive community input over the years. This project proposal is not in full alignment with the higher-density mixed-use vision in those plans set forth in those planning documents as it seeks a PUD and variance on building height and density in some building frontages. Therefore, the board supports the proposal under four conditions. Number one, that it complies with any future city affordability policy, particularly related to units that are affordable to middle-income workers in Inglewood as defined by the state of Colorado. That's why the board identified up to 10% of the units to be offered between 80 and 120% AMI. Our local businesses will thrive and stay here if their employees can live, work, and spend locally. Affordability is especially appropriate in this transit-oriented location. We ask that at least 5% of the units be fully accessible to meet the needs of the community, that the project relate to the Little Dry Creek Greenwell Trail on the Cherokee Frontage, and that it comply with applicable TSA overlay specific plan design guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hillary. And actually, I'll just make a quick point for members of public. I think members of council are aware, but I'm also the liaison as part of the DDA. I did recuse myself during any conversations or presentations from Kimco as part of this process, just to make everyone aware, so. Thank you very much, Hillary, for that. Moving up next to Tressa Miller. I'm sorry, Steve, did you have something else that you'd like to come up?
Covered it.
Oh, okay, perfect. All right, all right, sorry about that. Tressa Miller, if you could just state your name and your address.
Tressa Miller, my address is 4087 South Logan Street, Inglewood, Colorado. And I just want to ask if anybody has asked all the neighbors north of this site how they feel about this? Because they are the ones in those homes that will have to listen to this construction day after day after day. And how do they feel about the high rises going up? I have friends that live over near Sam's Automotive, and they're livid about all the apartments over there. I do not believe Hampton could hold all the traffic. I don't know if any of you have ever been on Hampton around four or five o'clock in the afternoon. It's a nightmare. More and more accidents every day. I also am employed by the Haunted House, the Ritual, seasonal, and I think it's done well. Hobby Lobby left, and Dollar Tree left because of all the theft they were going through. That was, if you ask them, that's what they say. I think Inglewood doesn't have enough in place for theft and enough police force to handle everything. So I think this is going to be not good for our community. We just have too many apartments already. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Tressa, for your comments tonight. We're moving on next to Kevin. And Kevin, I am not going to try to pronounce your last name, sorry about that.
My name is Kevin Amatusio. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
And your address, please.
4830 South Jason Street, Inglewood, 50-year Inglewood resident. I rise in favor of this development project, but it has some serious issues that I would like to suggest for your consideration. One of them is, why are there no condos? Why is it all apartments? Several of the speakers, public speakers, have already mentioned the fact that we are oversaturated with apartments. I think this council in the city of Inglewood should be interested in promoting entry-level ownership housing for its citizens. And we have a desperate shortfall in terms of availability. Now, I won't pretend to know what Kimco's philosophy is on this, but developers generally detest selling condos because the owners of the condos can sue for construction defects. So everything gets built in the Colorado Front Range as apartments, and the developer holds on to them for seven years until the statute of limitations runs out. Then they convert them to condos and sell them off. Well, the city should have the condos, and its citizens shouldn't have to wait seven years to get them. And I just don't understand why all, or at least some, of these residential developments are not going to be designated as condominiums to provide some potential for ownership for your citizens. My other concern is parking. One slot per unit is simply not palatable, and a half a slot for a hotel complex? I understand there's, you know, data out there that suggests that's appropriate, but I would just invite you to consider the Oxford Apartments or the Chase Bank Building Complex. At the Oxford Apartments, people park three and four blocks away from their residences because there's simply nothing else available. The Chase Bank Building is so overpopulated with such limited parking, it's scaring away customers and discouraging tenants. We need to be mindful that we want to attract people and not scare them away if we embark on this development. I would submit that we need homeownership. And the rental rates for the apartment buildings currently under construction, I understand, are between $2,000 and $2,500. And the, during construction, pre-leasing is only running at about 15%. So there's certainly no overpowering need. And I would submit, anybody who can afford $2,500 a month for rent could afford an entry-level condo and become a property owner in this city. Thank you for your consideration.
Kevin, thank you very much for speaking tonight. We are moving on next to Michael Chisholm.
Thank you, Michael Chisholm. I live at 3233 South Cherokee, immediately north of the project. And I support the project. I live at 3233 South Cherokee, immediately north of the project, and I support the project. And I think it's long overdue. I've lived in Inglewood for close to ten years, and I have stared at an asphalt sinkhole for the last nine and a half years. So, I'm encouraged by the development. I think it'll breathe life into the neighborhood and into the community. Kimco has responded to what me and my neighbors talked about at the meetings in terms of traffic congestion and traffic impact in our neighborhood, so I'm encouraged that they heard us and they're suggesting ways. We have a traffic congestion problem today, and I think this project may actually alleviate it or address it. I'm also encouraged by the green space and the easement discussion and not getting into the details, telling Kimco how to do their job, but the landscaping ideas are attractive. Reducing non-permeable surface area in that part of town is a good thing. I might want to go for a walk around that development. Today, I wouldn't. It's all asphalt. It's all hot in the summertime. So, just want to say I'm supportive, and I hope the project goes forward.
Michael, thank you very much for speaking tonight. I had you on the opposing side. So, with that, I will ask Dana Liebert to come and speak on the opposing side. Oh, no, no. Okay, we just have you. Whoops. All right, so then we just have favoring side. So, actually, I'll ask Blake, sorry, Blake Calvert to come and speak next, and then Dana, you will be next after that. Good evening, Blake. If you could just state your name and your address, then you may begin.
My name is Blake Calvert. My address is 5724 South Florence Street in Greenwood Village. I'm also a property owner and business owner in Inglewood at 3473 South Broadway in the downtown area. I'm here tonight wearing a few hats. I'm the chair of the Inglewood DDA Board, and so I'm here supporting the project in that capacity. Kimco did come present to us twice at two meetings where they were very receptive to our questions and concerns and even listened to our recommendations for the property and accepted those, and those are what became ultimately part of the Planning and Zoning Commission packet as our recommendations. I agree with everything that Ms. Portell also added. All those were the discussions for the Inglewood DDA, and we do think it does bring much-needed housing for the area and then also a much-needed hotel use into the area that's compatible with all the other uses that are going to be coming onboard with the city center redevelopment. As a property owner and business owner, we bought the old Guys and Dolls Building on Broadway in 2019. We saw that there was going to be investment in the area in the coming years. We were hopeful it was coming soon. We spent a significant amount of investment in our building, and so we're a professional services company, and so we employ a lot of young professionals that do not have places to live here in the city. And so, from our standpoint, we believe for professionals, where there's certainly a workforce housing issue, there's very much need, and so most of our employees, you have to drive to Castle Rock, to Parker, to Highlands Ranch, north of Denver, to Thornton. So, all those trips are creating the traffic because they can't live and work in the same location. And so, I do think housing is much needed. Also, as a business, the hotel use is very much needed because we have travelers that come, visit our office, and stay for an extended time, and they are spending their dollars in the Denver Tech Center, either in Denver or Greenwood Village, or in Denver, or in Highlands Ranch, or over in Lakewood. So, we're very much in support of the hotel use also and hope that it can come to fruition. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calvert, for your time tonight. And Dana Liebert, we have you on the opposing side now.
Well, hi. I'm Dana Liebert. I live at 2707 South Clarkson Street, and I support this in concept. I'm all for growth and development in Inglewood as long as it is rooted in ecological problem-solving and integrates plans to offset the potential additional carbon footprint that new development and additional population will bring. And I think this is an attractive design. It's certainly an improvement visually and in terms of green space. However, I didn't hear much about green, I didn't hear anything about green building design, about solar power, water efficiency, bird-friendly window design. I'm curious if there are electric chargers for EVs planned for this because with all this additional traffic from cars and new residents, I would hope that the development will encourage that they have EVs. Additionally, will the landscape design maximize the opportunity to mitigate biodiversity loss? The landscape design, I know this is just a rendering, it's not anything official, but it looked very standard. There were sidewalk strips that were turf where it won't be used and will get mowed and have emissions from that mowing. So, just overall, my concern with any development is, are we integrating the city's sustainability goals with that development? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Liebert, for your time. Anyone else? Anyone else online? City Clerk Carlisle, anyone else from the public that want to speak tonight, opposing or favoring? There is, okay. Come on up. Giving everyone a chance to speak tonight. So, when you are ready, if you want to state your name and your address, and then you may begin.
Hi, I'm Brittany Allen.
Oh, actually, Brittany, did you raise your hand at the beginning in terms of potentially speaking and being sworn in? I just want to make sure to.
I was sitting, but I'm here.
Okay. City Clerk, do you mind swearing in real quick?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. So, my name is Brittany Allen. I live at 9354 Princeton Street in Highlands Ranch, Colorado. Obviously, sorry. Natural there. I am the wife to David Allen you heard from earlier and co-owner of the Ritual Haunted House, and I just want to say that we really enjoyed being in Inglewood. We grew up in Inglewood. We met in Inglewood. We fell in love in Inglewood. I went to Clayton Elementary School, Sinclair Middle School, and Inglewood High School. I coached the cheerleading squad at Inglewood High School for several years, and I've been a big part of the community for a while, even really good friends with the Penn family. I know you guys all know the Pens. I just have, I had my name down, and then I kind of took it off because I wanted to come back up and state to the fact that, you know, the gentleman before me mentioned that a hotel is needed because people are staying in different cities and their money is going to other cities, but displacing businesses is going to do the same thing, right? It's a double-edged sword. So, while we may have people coming and staying in a hotel, you know, you're putting businesses out, and those businesses are now going to move out of the city. So, that 10,000 people that we bring in every season, they're going to go to a different place because we have to move. And again, we're not trying to shut down a project, but we just want to be heard. And as a longtime Inglewood resident, while I no longer live in Inglewood, my mom lives here, all my friends live here, and I'm speaking for a lot of people who couldn't make it tonight, that they're not in love with the idea of more apartments. And so, at this point, I'd like to reach out to Kimco to consider, can we meet in the middle and maybe do apartments and business similar to that of the Streets of South Lynn, just as an idea? I think that businesses are needed in the area, and as someone who grew up in Inglewood as a teenager, one of the things that we didn't have is a lot of things to do. There wasn't a lot to do as we grew up. And so, my husband and I decided to bring our business to Inglewood so that we could give the residents something to do, and we wanted to bring a year-round excitement to the community and the children of our friends, and now we're going to be displaced and put somewhere else. So, just in consideration, that's all I ask. Thank you so much.
Ms. Allen, thank you very much for speaking tonight. All right, anyone else want to speak that hasn't signed up? All right. I see that's it. And so, I guess the applicant's Kimco Development Team, if there's any final words you want to say on the public hearing tonight? And actually, I'll ask city staff, Will, if there was any additional information that you wanted to provide regarding the earlier answer or a question I should ask.
Just one for, you know, honoring, come to look, do some research on that question about the right-of-ways. It kind of varies a lot, especially on that western side. It seemed like to me from just some kind of rudimentary measuring from Google Maps and as well as RGIS, it's somewhere in the, like, seven to 15 feet range on each of those right-of-ways. So, some portions are narrower along, like, Floyd Street, which is the narrowest one, and then the widest one being that portion along Alati Street. But it varies, and those sidewalks that are currently out there are all between about six and nine feet currently.
Thank you, Will.
That was it for me, though. Unless you have any questions.
Sounds good. All right. Anything else from the Kimco Development Team? Any final parting words on this public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor.
If you wouldn't mind turning on your mic. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to address some of the public comments. I know we have some other subsequent follow-up hearings coming up, and so I maybe won't address everything, but just a couple of things that were quick and easy to speak to, I wanted to get those on the record for your consideration. One, there were a couple of folks who asked some questions about the wording of the conditions, and we would look forward to an opportunity to perhaps work with staff to make that a little bit more precise between now and the next time that you consider this, and so we'll huddle up with staff and the city attorney's office in that regard to see if we can't clarify some of the language around some of that, because they are pretty lengthy, and some of them are aspirational more than conditions of approval. I did want to mention just a couple of specific things since there was a commenter who asked questions about sustainability and energy efficiency measures, and I wanted to mention just a couple of things that we did not include in our presentation but perhaps should have, and that is that it is Kimco's intent to pursue lead gold certification for this project once they actually get approval and begin construction. It is possible, as it frequently is in the lead system, that you might end up with something more like lead silver, but certainly it is their target to pursue lead gold. And I also would mention that Inglewood is on the 2021 IBC, which I have had occasion to work with rather extensively, and it does incorporate a whole bunch of requirements for the building code that used to be in the separate Energy Efficiency Code, which are now part of the Standard International Building Code, and that includes some requirements around EV chargers. So, regardless, this and pretty much everything that gets built in the city of Inglewood going forward will be considerably more energy efficient than the construction of today or yesterday. So, those are just a couple of specific things. We look forward to the opportunity to continue to work with you and your staff and bring this project, this application for the PUD across the finish line.
Ms. White, thank you very much for that. Member Noonan Kemp and then Member Russell.
Can I ask, just one follow-up question?
You can, yeah.
Come on. I had this in my notes as well, but did you consider for-sale units on this site, or were apartments the only residential you considered, and can you explain why you chose residential?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I'm not sure I heard you correctly.
Did you consider for-sale condo units on this site?
Oh, did they consider for-sale condo units? I think that's probably a question for Mr. Records as well. I will say that the speaker that spoke to that issue did allude to one of the most significant issues that my clients, who might be seeking to construct owner-occupied units, encounter in the state of Colorado, and that is the construction defects liability issue, which this year, as every year, will be considered by the state legislature, and I am ever hopeful that the status might change. But let me ask Mr. Records to address that more thoroughly.
In general, the difficulty is because we're a real estate investment trust, which means selling is not the goal. The goal is to retain and accrue value for the shareholders. So, in terms of policy, Kimco is not a seller in general.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
And Member Russell.
So, my question is, can we consider any other information? I mean, I thought that our decision was based on all the information we received tonight. So, updating information would change things, and would that mean we would have to have another public hearing?
City Attorney Niles, do you want to? It's a very good question. Member Russell.
Yes, generally, once we close the public hearing, we don't accept additional new information upon which you would make your decision regarding the PUD because the quasi-judicial hearing is closed at that point. So, if we do have additional information to bring, we would need to have a second hearing, additional factual information.
Does that answer your question, Member Russell?
Yes, it did. And also, before we would close this, we probably need, the city council needs direction on quasi-judicial hearings about our ability to talk about this outside of this before the next meeting, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Are you alluding to something specific, or is there any comments that were made tonight that potentially we would hear additional information prior to our vote? I'm just trying to.
No.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying we really shouldn't take any additional information if people call us or want to talk to us about this.
Yeah. Thank you, Member Russell. Yep. I think we're in agreement there. Member Ward, go ahead.
I'll just note that I'm not opposed to having a subsequent public hearing, considering that I have an open request for information on what backs up the half a parking spot per key claim on hotels, and absent that evidence or proof of that industry standard, I might make a different decision than the one that the applicant would prefer.
Thank you, Member Ward. Sorry. And Member Wright, go ahead.
I agree, plus I also had the question regarding the easement on it being updated or not, because there's two different places in the PAC where it discusses where it may need to be updated in the future, and then it mentioned later on that it would be updated. So, I would like clarification on what's being said, when it will or will not be done.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Wright. Ms. White, did you have something to add there?
Well, just from the applicant's perspective, what I would say about that, I think you were asking a question of like, hey, if the city needs to update or expand the facilities that are within that easement, why wouldn't you do it at the same time that this project is under construction, right? To minimize disruption and so on. Am I understanding what the question was about correctly?
Correct. And at one point, it almost sounded like Kimco was going to upgrade that during construction. I mean, it's very confusing within this PAC on what it's saying in a couple of different places. So, we need clear clarification.
Well, I can certainly address that. It is not Kimco's intent to undertake any construction of the city facilities within the city easement, but the city certainly has the right to do that, and if the city intends to do that and if their timeline aligns with Kimco's construction plans, Kimco would be delighted to coordinate with the city so as to minimize construction disruption generally.
And that's my thought exactly.
City Attorney, thank you very much, Ms. White, for that. City Attorney Niles, can you just, because I just don't want to go down a path where we have to run another public hearing, but I think in the past, we have received additional information prior, or prior to the vote, but after the public hearing has closed. Am I mistaken in my, if a question came up during the public hearing and we asked for additional information, but it's not able to be provided until after the public hearing is closed, is that possible?
Municipal Code Section 1-10-2-7 applies to quasi-judicial hearings before city council. It states that city council shall make its decision upon the issues presented during the hearing. So, it would be my recommendation that if you would like to receive additional information to make sure that we don't have to republish notice of the hearing, that we continue tonight's hearing to a date certain, perhaps to our February 18 hearing, to give both city staff time and the applicant time, if necessary, to present you that additional information. So, that way, we don't close the hearing, we continue it, we present it, the factual information then, and then you can close the public hearing.
Thank you, City Attorney Niles. Member Ward?
If we leave the record open for additional written documentation, which is basically what I'm requesting, is that adequate? which is basically what I'm requesting, is that adequate? Or do we need to have an actual testimony night?
We do add documents to the public record. For example, all the emails that the city has received thus far, both for and against the project, I believe, are included within the public record. I would like for everything in the public record to be added before we close the public hearing, to make sure our public hearing in our record is completely finished before council begins deliberation.
So in theory, we could add closing this public hearing to the beginning of the agenda at the next regular session?
We could, yes.
That would be my suggestion.
So that would be, that would be the Tuesday after President's Day. So that would be the, the 18th. Okay. So then, just for my, just so I make sure that I'm clear here, we will continue on with the public hearing until the start of the meeting of February 18th. We would close it at that point with all written material. The vote will not occur until the following meeting, which would be March, whatever it happens to be.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Perfect. Is everyone in agreement with that on council? Just ahead, not, go ahead, Member Russell.
Would you explain that again? What, what information are we going to be taking?
So just, so it sounds like there's open questions. Member Wright, I think your question may have been answered now, but maybe just to get further clarification on what, who is doing what with the easement of Little Dry Creek and when? So that would be one question. And the second question would be the question that Member Ward had regarding parking spaces. Actually, if you could just clarify that, just for the record, Member Ward.
Yeah, the, the question I asked was if it's just industry lore or if there's actually some written documentation that indicates this as an industry standard. So what I'm looking for specifically is written documentation supporting the industry standard of half a parking spot per hotel room key. And if that's provided, great. If the rest of council doesn't think that's important enough, then we can close the public hearing tonight and we'll proceed absent that information. But I think it's important, so I would like it. And that's why I'm suggesting we leave the record open for additional written testimony or supporting materials of that type.
Thank you, Member Ward.
And can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead, Member Russell.
What I'm wondering as far as the underground tunnel for Little Dry Creek, is there, has the city assessed that at all? Because I know, is most of the flooding, when Little Dry Creek floods, related to the grate? Is the drainage sufficient to handle? Could we have him come tonight?
I was going to say, Tim, did you just want to take that question now? I think this is all part of the Mile High Flood District conversations, but.
Tim Ho, Deputy Director of Public Works, I can respond to that question. So the, the covert itself is, it's not sized for the 100-year storm. We are studying that currently. We don't have any current plans to upsize the covert at this point. We're looking at the surface flow in conjunction with this development to see how it would interact and how much flow we'd need to get through here. The reason we're going for the, we're asking for the 70-foot wide easement is if we ever do need to replace that covert and upsize it, we're going to need room to do it. The 40 feet we have now is not adequate to upsize that covert or replace it someday if we ever need to. The covert has been inspected. It gets inspected every two years by, it's part of, it's kind of odd, but it's called a bridge. It's part of the C.D.O. Bridge Inspection Program and they go through and inspect that covert for us. And the last inspection, it was in very good condition. There's no real concerns about failing or anything in the immediate future. It's just the, the size of it is being studied right now as we look at the Little Dry Creek flows to verify that, how much that covert can take and how much surface flow. In addition, we'd need to flow through this area. So we are currently studying that to make sure we have the, the right capacity through this development as well.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor Potem.
Just in terms of, sorry, I read, I was just going to ask more about continuing the public hearing. So if Mr. Ho's.
Well, now we're continuing the public hearing, so. We are, go ahead and ask, or.
So I, do we need a vote to continue, motion to continue the public hearing?
Yes, I recommend you do.
And, and then my, my thought would be, why not just continue it to the date that we're going to hear it on first reading? And if we have any further questions before the first reading from staff, we get a chance to interact, interact a little bit before we close it, rather than just closing it at the beginning of the meeting?
So just have it as part of the regular agenda?
Yeah, just continue it to, yeah, just add it to the regular agenda continuation.
That would make sense.
If we, you know, if anything else comes up, then it's not. We haven't, you know, closed it off at the beginning of the meeting.
That makes sense. Okay. So we're just add it as a regular item? That makes sense.
But then we still won't vote on first reading until the following?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Until the first meeting in March.
Well, I was thinking we would do, you know, do final questions on the night. We would vote on it, so we get the final answers.
So, yeah, for everyone just in the room, I just want to make sure we get the clarification correctly. But City Attorney Niles, are we able to vote on the same night of closing the public hearing?
It's my recollection that we wait, we close the meeting and we don't vote until the next meeting. But I was looking really quickly at our municipal code and I can't locate it. So that's my recollection, but I'm looking for the code section to confirm.
I thought that was just practice, not a.
I think we've always done it. Since I've been on council, we wait a week. I can't quote the code, but.
So City Attorney Niles, I'll just give you a minute before we make a final decision here. Any, while City Attorney Niles is looking at that, any further questions for members of council? Ms. White, is there anything you want to add?
Thank you for the opportunity to chime in as you're deliberating this procedural issue. I just want to state on behalf of the applicant that if this hotel parking issue is the only outstanding issue that might cause you to consider continuing the public hearing, which would then in turn push the vote out further, which would then in turn push the next vote out further, the applicant would be willing to simply delete that proposal from the PUD and defer to the city's standards for hotel parking.
So we're basically just talking about a quarter percent at that point? From 0.5 to 0.75, which is a lot.
Whatever your standard is, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head. The point is, we wouldn't be asking to change anything, to reduce anything. We would just be following the city's code.
Right.
What I'm trying to say is that the timeline is important to the applicant.
Exactly. No, I, I, the fact that you were able to deliberate so quickly on an item that is, bringing some concern to member, some members of council. I appreciate that. Anyone have, have any objection to that aspect?
I mean, I don't have any objection to that. I'm just, does that solve the problem so we can close the public hearing now? Because there were several other questions on the table, so I don't think that prevents a delay.
It sounds to me like that may be the only outstanding issue. I know that there's a member, issue still concerned by Member Wright, but I believe, Tim, you did answer the question in terms of why we need the additional easement space and we don't have a timeline for when that may be prepared. So I think it does answer that. You're late.
I guess my biggest question with that is with all the building that we're doing right now, and my biggest concern, and it would be for Kimco, is they build this, you know, if approved, this beautiful development. And then we come a couple of years in and say, guess what? We're going to tear up all this stuff because we have to increase, even if it's five, 10 years down the road, we have to. And that's my big concern, being mindful of what could happen a few years. And then who, who's going to pay the taxpayers to fix the parking lots, fix the, the landscaping and stuff? So do we need to think about now? Do we go ahead and upsize now and look at the cost of that? While if this is approved, is it going to be cheaper for our taxpayers to do it now, knowing it'll have to happen? Or is it going to be so much more expensive in everything? Landscaping, you know, everything that we're looking at here? And that's what I'm asking. That's my big question. It's taxpayer money and I think it's going to cost a whole lot more because of what we're looking at there and what will be in place later on. That's my ask.
So it's a very good question and it's a very valid question. But the idea would be if we did have to get increased capacity in that covert, we wouldn't upsize the one that's there. The only thing we would do on the existing one is if it ever did fail someday and we had to go in and repair it, we would need room to dig it up. But if we did have to increase the capacity, the idea would be to probably lay a covert around the site, like a secondary covert that goes around the site instead of through the site. We'd go around it with the secondary covert if we needed it. The thought is that we're going to be able to funnel it through the site on the surface and not have to do a new covert. But if we did a new covert, the idea would be to take it around Cherokee to Floyd and around that way, rather than trying to enlarge that covert there. That 70-foot would just not be enough. We couldn't put much bigger of a covert that's in there now. The, the 70 feet is more just to repair the one that's there now if we ever needed to.
Now I'm more confused than ever. Okay, thank you.
All right. Member Ward, go ahead.
One follow-up question, I think this is from Mr. Charles. Just to clarify the parking requirement. The parking requirement requested is one-half space per hotel room, as we discussed earlier. The current standard says one space per hotel room with a potential for a 25% reduction. Can you clarify what the circumstances are that would lead to a 25% reduction? I assume that's an administrative approval?
Yeah, so it, I believe it's actually, you know, if you keep in mind that this is all part of that TSA-specific plan, which calls for a review board that goes along with things. So there's some, you know, there's some administrative portions of that and there's some portions that, you know, if this was a use by, use by right, it would go through that review board where those things would get hashed out with any other adjustments being made. You know, so with that, you know, I would say probably, you know, I would lean towards giving an, an exact number because that review board would not be a part of this project.
So just to clarify, when we established the guidelines for the PUD, we're saying that you have to comply with these specific things in, relative to the project. And by reverting to the underlying code that is there existing now, that could be one parking space per hotel room or up to 25% fewer, but no more than that.
Correct.
Okay. That, I think, I think I have a grasp of that and that's acceptable to me.
Anything else from members of council? It looks like we're in favor of closing the public hearing at this point, so. All right. Mayor Potem, is there anything you want to add?
No, I was just going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I think we're in agreement there, so go ahead, Mayor Potem.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
All right. Thank you very much, Kimco Development Team, for the presentation tonight, for the conversation. Thank you very much, the staff, to all members of the public for coming and speaking for or against the project. Really appreciate, appreciate you all coming out and providing your viewpoint. We'll be back here speaking about this item the Tuesday after President's Day. All right, everyone, do we need a break? Let's take a 10-minute break and come back at, what is that? 9:45-ish, somewhere around there? Thank you, everyone.
See if that was.
Kevin has an answer.
Oh, okay.
We'll bring in the expert.
Kevin knows everything.
You want to speak tonight, Kevin? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Ingles, Director of Finance. The long-term asset reserve was a restriction within the general fund, so not a separate fund itself.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions, Member Russell?
No.
Any further questions for members of council? All right, seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve 11A1?
I move to approve 11A1.
Thank you, Member Russell, and thank you, Member Wright. Any further comments? All right, can we please vote?
Mayor Pretim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you, City Attorney Nows. You also have CB4, 11A2. This is a many municipal code to combine certain city pension and retirement boards.
Yes, I'm very excited to bring this to city council. This is a project that I personally have been working on for multiple years, including a significant amount of citizen outreach, board outreach, and plan member beneficiary outreach. So it's finally to the point where we can bring this matter to city council. So we presented during a study session some time ago regarding all of the cities' boards and commissions and how we have a significantly larger number than other cities our size. And as part of that presentation, we discussed that the city has four old hire pension and disability boards. The old hire police pension, old hire firefighter pension, the volunteer firefighter pension fund, and the police and fire supplemental disability fund. And these are all boards that are largely inactive. The last record we have of any meetings for these were in 2017. And it's because administration of these plans, largely for employees hired before April 8, 1978, administration was transferred to FPPA, or the Fire and Police Pension Association, which is a statewide organization, which means the day-to-day management of the board was, of the plan was no longer required. However, a board is still required to answer any questions by FPPA or to consider requests from beneficiaries, like a COLA increase or something of that nature. So the last time these boards met was 2017, from our city records. And they haven't been fully staffed, and they haven't been fully appointed. So we analyzed whether these four boards could be combined with the city's non-emergency employee retirement plan board, which is an active board full of citizens. Councilmember Russell serves as the council liaison and has a large amount of expertise regarding pension plans and finance. So we concluded that the old hire pension and disability funds have no current active oversight, and they needed some oversight, and that NERP could likely add a single annual agenda item just to review their finances, make sure the plans are in good shape, make sure there's no beneficiary concerns. There are about 60 beneficiaries of all these plans currently. And such an annual agenda item is unlikely to add a significant amount of work to NERP. We also determined that city council by ordinance could make these changes to combine these into a single board. So I already alluded, we did quite a bit of work and outreach. And because I'm certainly not a defined benefit plan expert, we also reached out to an outside legal consultant to confirm our findings and recommendations. We reached out to FPPA. We talked to the NERP board because they have a wealth of knowledge and experience. And then we also mailed a letter to each beneficiary of the plan to make sure they don't have an objection. We did mail out all those letters, and we received zero objections. I also discussed there are some beneficiary members that were last appointed to the board of each of these, and I reached out to each of them to make sure they didn't have any issues. In fact, they all welcomed the opportunity for a combined board because they had some issues that they would like a board to address and resolve. But one thing we were really concerned with is we didn't want to disenfranchise anyone that was currently serving on a board and doing a good job. And so we wanted to make sure, because city council has already cultivated this experience and appointed them to boards, that we continued that, and everyone that wanted to serve was allowed to continue to serve. So we wanted to make sure you knew who all of the current board members are. And then what we propose. So we propose at least seven voting members, like the current NERP board, maintain the city council member, the three citizen members, but reduces the required two NERP plan participant members to one required member, but up to two. And we say this because we only currently have one member, and we've had some difficulty filling those positions. In addition, we recommend at least one member, but no more than two, that are participants of the police pension and the firefighter pension. And that, we want that flexibility because we want to make sure that everyone that's currently active and serving is still given that opportunity. We also recommend moving the finance member, or it's the finance director, from a non-voting, or from a voting member, rather, to a non-voting ex officio member. So someone there just to provide guidance to the NERP board. Assuming we keep this as recommended, we would recommend that the first board be appointed in staggering terms, of course, and it would be an initial board of nine members, assuming everyone that's currently serving would agree to continue to serve. And of course, because we do board appointments via resolution, the first step would be first and second reading on an ordinance submitting municipal code to make these combination changes. And then the next step would be to bring a resolution making the actual appointments to city council to serve on the board.
Thank you very much, City Attorney Nows, for all the work that you've put into this over the last few years. We have discussed it quite a bit, so.
One thing I didn't include in the PowerPoint is we would recommend the new name of ERP instead of NERP because it's very similar. I mean, the NERP board is really going to be the backbone of this. And so we would, we propose the name of the Inglewood Retirement Pension Plan Board.
Thank you, City Attorney Nows. Anybody want to have the first question on ERP? Member Russell.
Thank you. Actually, I have a couple of questions in the council communication. A number four, it says consulted with FPPA regarding any concerns combining old hire police and fire disability pension board oversights. Are they already being paid from FPPA? Is that where they get their pension checks from, the old hire?
Yes, I believe so. FPPA administers all of it. And so we still budget funds for them. So we pay to FPPA the employer portion every year, but yes, they handle everything. My concern was, we didn't want to propose this ordinance and then find out after the fact that FPPA had some sort of objection or they thought it implicated some sort of legal issue or financial issue. So that's why we included them at the very beginning, once we started formulating a recommendation, to make sure it aligned with their position as well, and they had zero objection.
Okay, so, I mean, one thing I know that the board is talking about is giving some of the old hire people a cost of living raise and perhaps doing it not through FPPA. Will that create a problem?
So that is outside of the scope of my expertise, but I'll tell you what I know, which is enough to be dangerous. More than likely, it will require, it depends on the financial analysis. It's my understanding that our finance department had requested FPPA complete a financial analysis to determine if the fund on its own could sustain a COLA increase without an additional cash influx from the city. If it can't, it most likely will require the city to budget additional funds annually to be able to pass those through to the 62 beneficiaries.
And so the board can really talk about that, and you can answer those questions. That, nothing here impacts that, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And in fact, this would create a board that has the authority to create the analysis and then make a recommendation to city council.
Okay, perfect. And then one other question, and the only reason I know this is a few years ago, this gentleman called me, and he was on the volunteer fire department. And he was, he was looking for getting reimbursed. He got dropped off the list somehow. I'm not sure this gentleman is still around, but what he told me is that Inglewood transferred their volunteer fire department to Sheridan. And so if that's true, then we don't necessarily, I mean, if we go ahead and put him in here, is that going to mean anything?
Well, I did confirm that there are beneficiaries in the, in all of these plans. Because if there's no beneficiaries, we don't have any active, we're not currently enrolling, we could have just removed it from municipal code altogether. So I did confirm that there are beneficiaries that need a governing board. I don't know the history of maybe transferring our volunteer firefighters over to Sheridan, but presumably if someone retired while we had the volunteer firefighters pension plan, then they would still be a beneficiary of our plan, and that would be administered by FPPA.
Okay, and, all right, so this would set that up. I mean, if I could get ahold of this person, but I need, do we have, I mean, I'm sure that the volunteer fire department would have been on FISH. Do we have that information, or would that have been in the fire department, not in the?
I do suspect it was under the fire department.
Okay.
Because we were decentralized in our records, but.
Okay, we'll deal with that later. Thank you.
I knew, I know FPPA was able to give us a complete list of all beneficiaries, including their, all of their contact information. And that's how I was able to send them all a letter. So we should be able to get some records from them as well.
Any other questions for members of council? All right, seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve 11A2?
I move to approve 11A2.
Thank you, Member Russell. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Any further comments? Just want to thank you for all the work that you put into this, Tim. It's been several years and several times that we've just been asking for an update, and yeah, it's just many years of work. So thank you so much for your work on this. And with that, can we please vote?
Yes. Mayor Pretim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to 11C1. This is the motion of an award of contract to Jalisco International for the construction of the Oxford Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. Deputy Director Tim House. Hello, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Glad to be here tonight to finally award this project or recommend an award. This is our Oxford Avenue Pedestrian Bridge project. It's been in the works for a few years now. We bid it out a couple of years ago, and we didn't have enough funding to construct it, so we had to go back and do a little bit of work and secure a little additional funding to actually make this project a reality. And we're happy to report we've got new bids, and with the additional funding, we'll be able to recommend an award this evening. So here's a little bit about the timeline there. It was 2020 when we first executed the IGA with CDOT for the design and construction of this project. It's a pedestrian bridge that will go across Oxford Avenue, just west of Navajo Street, parallel to the railroad tracks there. And we did a contract with Wilson and Company back in 2020 for the design of this project. And it was a final design in 2022, and the bids were about $600,000 higher than we had budgeted for at that time. So we did go back, and we worked with the developer of the Sam's Automotive site there at the southeast corner of Navajo and Oxford there to contribute to the construction of this bridge, since their development will impact the use of this bridge. A lot of the residents there will use the bridge to access the nearby Oxford Light Rail Station. So with that additional funding, and then we also were able to add another $500,000 into the Public Improvement Fund budget last year in 2023. And then at the, late last year, we did bid the project out, and we were able to get seven bids. Actually, we got pretty good turnout, and the low bid was within the budget we have here, so we'll go over that. Here's a little bit of the purpose of the project here. It's obviously to enhance the pedestrian bicycle access to the Light Rail Station in Oxford there. And to make it safer to cross Oxford there, people won't have to cross on Oxford. They can go on the bridge and go over the road there. Oxford's kind of a busy intersection there, a lot of things going on, so it's a little safer to have the bridge. It'll also help with traffic enhancements. Pedestrians won't have to push the button on the signal to cross anymore and cause there to be more red time on Oxford. They'll be able to let more cars through there. Pedestrians can use the bridge instead of the surface crossing. And it also supports the walk-in wheel plan. This is a big part of the rail trail project. This is actually the first bridge that will be installed as part of the proposed rail trail project to install a trail all the way from Bates Avenue south to roughly Bellevue. So this is exciting to have this first piece ready to install. And then we're looking, hopefully, construction will start here in the spring, and we'll have it installed by the end of the year. So here's the bid and selection process. As I said, we got seven bids here. We got pretty good, pretty good range, not huge, but the low bid at 2.2 was a little bit below our engineer's estimate this time. We were happy to see that. Actually, three or four of the bids were below our estimates. That was pretty good. But anyway, the recommended low bidder is Jalisco International. They actually are the contractor that did the Floyd and Alati improvements. They did the intersection improvements there, and they're doing the Dartmouth Bridge right now. So they were a contractor we're familiar with, and we have worked with them before, so we know the personnel, and we feel confident they can construct this project, and we can get it built for the budget we have. Here's a little breakdown of the funding here to kind of see the, this is a grant-funded project. We did get a Dr. Condon federal grant for a significant portion of the cost of this project, so we're happy to finally be able to use that funding to build this project. We did, got the city match there, and then the city overmatched the additional we put in to add to the budget to have enough to construct the bridge. And then we also got that developer contribution of almost $500,000. We were really happy to get that, to give us enough budget to build this project. So with that, we recommend that Council award this contract to Jalisco International for the construction of the bridge. And I'll answer any questions you have about the contract or the project.
Tim, thank you very much for the presentation. Member Ward, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, these are more project-related questions in regards to access. So the bridge sits on top of the retaining wall of the apartments for, was it Oxford Station there, on the corner of Oxford and Santa Fe?
Correct.
If, if I'm a pedestrian and I'm going down Navajo Street and I hit the corner of Navajo and Windermere, what, or Navajo and Oxford, rather, what, what is there to direct me towards the bridge, and how would I access it from that corner?
So on the southwest corner there, and I'll have a little laser pointer, but on the southwest corner, basically just north of the Oxford Station apartments, there's a sidewalk there right now that will lead directly up to the bridge. It comes off of Navajo, and it heads west to the bridge, and you'll get up that way. And then on the other side, it kind of meanders back down to Windermere over to the entrance to the Light Rail Station. But yeah, it's basically a hard left you have to make to get up to the bridge on that corner.
The bridge is at a significant elevation compared to the sidewalk location there on the corner of Navajo and Oxford. How would someone who was in a wheelchair or on a bicycle access the foot of the bridge?
So the slope there now is ADA accessible. We looked at it. It is enough of a distance. It's steep, but it's still ADA. You can get up to it. Eventually, it'll be part of the rail trail, and you won't have to do that. It'll be, you know, you'll be on the rail trail. You don't have to come off of Navajo or whatever. There'll be an access point, but you won't have to access the bridge from there. It's just an option. So it is steep, but it is ADA. We can get up to that bridge. It's, it is a bit of a climb, but it is accessible.
So a single ramp, not like a dual ramp or anything like that, just one?
Right. It's somewhat a little bit of a meander, but it does make its way up there. And it is, it's kind of dug into the bank there a little bit, so it is ADA accessible that we've looked at to be able to get there. So it is, it's a temporary solution for now, so we can get the rest of the rail trail built to the south there and have a little better access point further south, more than likely.
And will there be access from the apartment building itself?
Yes, yes. It'll be right on the parking lot level of the apartment building, right at the surface level there. They can walk right to it or bike to it, or it's right, right at the level of their parking lot on the west side of the building there.
And it sounds like this is significantly beyond the scope of this project that we're approving tonight, but have we had any conversations with the apartment complex about directing pedestrian traffic through their private property to make accessibility easier from that location?
Oh, we have not discussed that with them. We have the public sidewalk there. We plan to use that. Certainly an option we could think about if there is an issue with getting to the bridge, but we have not had those discussions with the apartment complex yet.
Okay, thank you.
Member Wright.
Thank you. Okay, this was not part of my original questioning, but Member Ward has a good point, and it sparked some questions. So someone with a walker, someone with a cane, someone in a wheelchair, that may not be electric. Maybe they're, you know, they have to hand wheel it. They would have to do a hard right from the sidewalk, which is on an incline to begin with, if I remember correctly, to start going up that ramp to begin with to go, to get up to that ramp. Is that correct?
It is a bit of a climb to get up to where the bridge abutment will be there.
How big of a climb? What degrees?
It should be less than 10% is what the ADA is, so it's less than that, and it is accessible. We've looked at to get to there. There's a sidewalk there now that does lead to the back to that parking lot right now, so it's already there, and it's installed. We won't be installing it or tying into what's already there. And it was installed for ADA requirements at that time.
And have the ADA requirements changed since that time?
Not that I'm aware of. No, I think it's all the same, so it should still be accessible. It's not the most optimal access point, for sure, but for now, that's the best way we can get into the bridge. We don't have the right-of-way on the west side of Oxford Station to do anything there just yet. We're hoping to, with the future rail trail project, get that right-of-way and extend the path to the south there, and maybe have a little easier way to get off of Navajo up in there.
And was there any thought, maybe putting the bridge just east of Windermere? Opposed to, so close to Santa Fe?
Yeah, that kind of, I guess, gets it out of alignment with the rail trail, where we're trying to do more of a straight path through there the best we can and not have it zigzag around too much. We're trying to have a straight of a quarter there as we can get. That would, it'd stick the bridge up pretty high if we put it there. It would be difficult to get ADA accessibility up to that.
Because of the semis and stuff like that?
Yeah.
I got you. Okay. So that brings up my next question. Who's going to be in charge of clearing all the snow and de-icing and make sure that the pathway up to the bridge, because it appears to be covered? And if it's not, then that bridge, making sure that it is safe and the upkeep of that entire area?
So that's our Parks Department. We've coordinated with them. That'd be part of the Parks snowplow plan.
And do you know how, how high prior, how high of a priority it would be for Parks then?
I don't know if I can speak to that. It's, we've talked to them, and they put it on their plan for plowing. I'm not sure where it'd fit into their schedule, but it would, I assume in a reasonable time, it'd be plowed off. Definitely within probably 12 hours of the storm or something, they'd get around to it.
Okay, because if we're expecting people, especially if we have, I know, I know several people that use the light rail that are in wheelchairs. And if it snows or something like that, and they can't access it because of the snow to get up to it, that would be very difficult.
Yeah, I think if the demand proves that we need to do it earlier, I'm sure we could talk to Parks about getting to it sooner than later. If there's a demand there for that, that there's a lot of people using it to get to work and things, we'd make sure we got it on the priority list.
And then, and then the upkeep of the bridge itself, does that fall on CDOT, or does that fall on the city?
It'll be owned by the city. The city would have to upkeep that bridge, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So, Tim, I'm just trying to figure out where the, on the light rail, on the platform side, where does this end? Like, how much walking, is it right on the platform in order for them to access the light rail?
So the, the sidewalk to the north, it actually kind of zigzags back down to Windermere, and then you walk up the sidewalk on Windermere to the, see where that concrete is? That's actually kind of the entrance to the Light Rail Station. So it doesn't, it doesn't shoot straight north into the station. It'll zigzag back down to Windermere, and then you take that sidewalk up to the actual station.
So it's just getting them across Oxford?
Right, exactly. It gets them across Oxford and then back to Windermere, and then they go up a little further north to get to the actual station. Yeah, I guess we should have shown the path on each side there to make it a little easier to understand how it connects into the existing sidewalk network there.
Okay, so that's, that's where it's taking them. So the future rail trail is going to be connected through Windermere, across the bridge, and then I think it runs, does it run parallel to the train station at that point?
Correct. Yeah, I think coming down Windermere, we're going to be kind of out in Windermere a little bit, probably, just the way that lines up. The tracks are pretty close to Windermere. We'll have to be right on the edge, and then we'll wind down, then come up to the bridge here, and then it'll parallel the tracks pretty much all the way to the south is the idea right now. We can stay up against the tracks for the rest of the way.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Mayor Pretim.
So to the north of the, of Oxford there, is there anything preventing people from just walking across the green space to access the light rail?
I think there's a fence there right now. I think that it's surrounded by fence on that edge. I think on the, at least right at Windermere and Oxford there, and I think it keeps people out of that grass area.
So where is it? So it goes across, I'm just, I'm looking at like the Google, you know, street view, and I see a fence there, but they're going to be elevated when they come across, right? How do they drop back down to the sidewalk?
Well, yeah, so the path, it kind of winds down that hill to get there to keep the ADA accessibility there. There's a bit of a loop there to get back down to Windermere, so that's, that.
So that we have to build as a part of this project?
Yeah, that's part of this project, is to build that path down there. The north path is not there right now. There's nothing there. We will be building that to access back down to Windermere there. That is, I apologize, we should have had that all on there to make, once you see it, I think it would make sense, but.
And is there a straight, like, if, if, is that city property to the north there? Are we on RTD or rail, you know, right-of-way?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's city-owned. We didn't have to get an easement for it. I'm pretty sure it's city-owned right there. I don't think RTD extends all the way down there.
What would it be, would, would it be possible to just run a sidewalk straight over to the entrance to the light rail there?
That, I think that is part of the future plan. Once the rail trail ties in, you can either go straight there, or then you have the option to go back down to Windermere. For people who maybe aren't using the Light Rail Station, they just want to get across there and ride their bike further north again. I think that's probably how the rail trail will end up being. It'll kind of wind back down to Windermere and go up Windermere, and then there'll be a straight shot for those who want to go to the light rail, or there's a bypass to go down back to Windermere and keep going north.
I think we should prioritize, like, continuing that on, because it's the whole purpose of people getting to Light Rail Station. To, like, what I worry about is we build this thing, and then for years, everybody's like, why do we have to walk all the way down to Windermere and around Windermere and get back across?
Exactly, right back down.
I think, you know, we should get that in our capital, because that's just a side, you know, a couple hundred feet of sidewalk, it looks like. Like, not, it's an expense, but it's not, you know, a huge expense, so I'd like to see that prioritized.
And that is, I, you know, as you talk about, I think that might be part of what we're doing, because you're right, it's silly to leave that little gap right now. I apologize. I don't have the actual plan in front of me. I think that is actually part of the plan, is there's a straight sidewalk, and then there's a loop down. So I'm pretty sure that's all part of this. I apologize. I don't have that drawing to show you, but it is. I believe that is all part of this project. It all ties to the light rail or back down to the sidewalk, just to have the option.
Can we get some more information, you know, get a council request or whatever?
Yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I'll do that. I'll send you all the plan of, here's how the sidewalks are going to connect, so you can see them better, but it does all, it won't just be an island bridge. It will actually connect back to things that people can get in it on and off of it, so I can send that drawing to you for sure.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Any further questions from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve 11C1?
Move to approve 11C1.
Thank you, Mayor Pretun. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any comments? I'll make a comment there. I, I, I will be supporting this, but I do have some of the concerns about the, I want to see the sidewalk all the way through to the platform. Because when I look at this, yes, we're doing it for the walk-in wheel plan, which means that we're trying to provide easier access for all. And so there are going to be people that are able-bodied that are still going to just cross through Windermere because it's just a shorter path to get to the light rail. But those that are, you know, in wheelchairs, walkers, some of the concerns that we had, we're still making it too difficult for them. So I will be supporting this, but I do want to see that connection because it just doesn't make much sense for me for them to have to go all the way around for that piece, but. But no, I appreciate all the work that you put into this, Tim, and the Public Works Department on this. It's been a couple of years on this item as well, so. But I will be supporting this with the expectation that we will make it easier, easier for everyone across on this bridge, so. And with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Pretim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp. Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Tim, thank you so much for the late evening as well, so. All right, moving on to mayor's choice. I don't, I had something for tonight. I completely forgot what it was, so I'll see if I can remember for next week. Councilmember's choice. Go ahead, Member Ward.
I just wanted to take a moment to apologize to the clerk on, on the public record. I made some abrupt comments during tonight's public hearing regarding the meeting packet. I've secured some additional information since then, and it's not my goal as a council member to disparage the work of any staff member publicly. And unfortunately, my comments ended up doing that. And I have a lengthy career doing work similar to what the clerk does and never appreciated it when a public official called me out publicly regarding something that I had done that was not necessarily my fault. So I'm sorry, Clerk Carlisle. That's not who I want to be as an elected official, but occasionally we all step in poo, and I hope you'll forgive me.
Thank you very much.
Member Wright.
Thank you. The Malley Trust group met today, and there's some big changes coming to the Malley Center. The trust approved $100,000 to funding. Get that roll. The trust approved $100,000 to funding that will go towards new equipment and a bunch of other changes that were, are going towards the Malle Center. Also, on Friday, it is, I don't want to get it wrong, it is the Sweet Songs and Treats from 1:30 to 2:30, the Denver Dolls will be performing, and their music type is 40s, 50s, vintage is what I was told. You need to get tickets, I believe there are 50 still available. And also, Malle Center is going to be closed from the 24th of February to March 2nd for the routine maintenance, but on top of that, for pickleball folks, they will also be closed, the tennis table and pickleball courts, which are indoors, will be closed on the 20th and 21st. I guess there was some kind of leak, and there's repairs that need to be done, so letting everybody know now, so they don't get angry later, so. And that is it for me.
Planning ahead. Thank you very much, Member Wright. Anyone else? All right, City Managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll cut out a couple of reports that I had for you tonight, and keep it to the important ones. Just a couple of events, it's going to be a busy week next week for council. After your council meeting on Monday, on February 11th, you'll have at 8:25 a.m., the only time that Senator Bridges could meet to, to cover legislative matters of interest to Inglewood and the state. On February 12th, we would love to, and, and I think this has been on the calendar since November, I believe, but on February 12th, 5:30 to 7:00, at Broken Tea, we'd really like to have as many council members come to the first session of Elevate Inglewood. One of the things that they told us last year was that they would love more face time with council, we agree with that. So we have a meet and greet, and, for about 30 minutes, for the first 30 minutes, but then we'd like to put you at the front and have panel questions, and you serve as a panel, let them pepper you with questions, but also I'll have a few set ones, to, softballs for you to kind of start us off. So if you could do that, we'd really appreciate that. It's a great group, a very large class this year, we had to cut a number of folks, unfortunately, but only had room for 24, which is still the largest we've had. February 13th, there is an Arden Inglewood Apartments Tour, if you're interested, that's 3:32, 4:30 p.m. And then the following week, on March 7th, well, in a couple of weeks, we have a tour of Bridge House scheduled at 10 a.m. to see progress there. The only, the last update I have is that this weekend, just wanted to let council know, we had two different large meetups of the cars that we've had some concerns about. So on Friday night, we, we estimate about 500 cars at the Denny's Parking Lot. We held over the swing shift, so basically had two shifts patrol on at the same time to double the number of officers to help clear the meetup. We are working to identify the organizer, they did disperse with, mostly without incident, but there was a, an individual that was arrested, that we arrested for obstructing a highway. So we are trying to be aggressive with these.